I'd like to add that in the fifteen years I have lived here at Mass Road, any dealings with the Goffstown Police Department have always been with officers who have been professional and respectful, speaking in the vernacular, you guys are the best. Michelle Houghton, and that is two, again, Kevin and Paul. So it'll be, I'm trying to think, Kevin, is it? Nor Chaptalane, and Paul Lavalley, I'm thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. Oops. Next, I just have a couple of thank yous. I think so far this season, we've seen an awful amount of snow, so I'd like to extend our thanks to the crew at DPW and all of our town folks who help maintain all of our sidewalks and keep our buildings in order. It's been quite challenging the last couple of weeks, and appreciate, you know, plowing the roads and keeping up with everything. And the next thing is, after last Thursday night's Budget Committee, we had a structure fire on Elm Street, and I know that it was pretty darn cold out there, and we had a lot of call firefighters and officers that were on duty, police, it was quite the scene. The communities were there, and so I just want to thank those who responded to that fire, did a fantastic job, so. All right, any other announcements? I have one more. Town candidate filing period will end this Friday at 5:00 PM at the Town Clerk's office. Anyone looking to run for an elected office, please file with the Town Clerk this week. Any other? Okay. Oh, one more. The Business Expo, for anyone who's interested, who is a business owner, who would like to have a booth at the Second Annual Business Expo, which will be held on March 19th, just contact Town Hall, and they'll be able to certainly send you the form or electronically send it to you. And the costs are very nominal, it's a great way to get your business out there with those in the community, so if you're interested in Phil as a business owner, we put one right in front of you. All right? We expect to see you there. All right.
Just so that you know, when I do the tower clock here, I don't charge.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, we're going to accept our minutes, and this is of January 10th. I waited for you, Phil, until you got here, so, well, yeah, it's in the prior packet.
It's in here, too.
The 10th is in here.
Okay, it's about the 17th. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 10th. Does anybody have any, a second needed on that one?
I'll second it.
Okay, any corrections?
Yes.
And what page?
Page 10, second paragraph.
Yep.
Chairman Gross repeated the motion, which was to provide 2%, not $2, to non-union wages. It's important for the motion to be correct.
What page was that?
Page 10.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, second paragraph. Anything else?
And who made the motion, who selected to reject the motion, and then Phil seconded?
Yeah. Any other changes? Going once, all right. All those in favor of accepting the January 10th meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
That's five zero, all right. Next would be the January 17th minutes, need a motion to accept with or without corrections.
To accept with corrections.
Okay, we have a motion to accept with corrections, seconded by Selectman Devanza, and which page?
11.
Page number 11. All right.
The bold. That section basically says that we adjourned, but I don't, I think we may have recessed.
Yes.
And you made the motion and you seconded it.
Oh, what does that mean?
He's a split personality, that's what he is.
He's very fast, he can get to it.
I'll offer correction as well.
Does anybody know who, did you know if you motioned that, or?
No, we didn't adjourn. We recessed. And I believe this may just be a cut base.
Yes, okay. All right. Okay, we'll take that out.
There was no motion to recess.
I think I just called a recess.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Page, hang on one second. Page two.
Page two.
From the bottom.
Yes, sir.
Paragraph, second paragraph from the bottom. That should read, that the, make the auditorium on the second floor for 49-person capacity.
Right.
An ADA-compliant restroom.
Oh, that's where I heard it.
Right.
And I will offer correction as well, please. On the very last page, that's where the motion being adjourned should have been, but didn't get there properly. And again, I have Vice Chairman Devanza moving, Vice Chairman Devanza seconded. I don't know what's wrong with this, so.
Who wants credit for that one?
Yeah, who wants credit for the second?
TE grant, it probably should be Selectman Pierce.
No, that was.
It's to adjourn, though, this should be, this should be to adjourn.
No. No, 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 no. Yeah, but wait a minute, hang on a second, then where is that motion belong?
Do you have it somewhere else?
Yeah.
Because I think Nick made that.
It belonged in that meeting.
Rail trail finished up midway through page 11.
So maybe where that other motion is.
It's supposed to be.
Oh, yeah. So swap them out?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think Nick, Nick made the motion, and I think I seconded it.
Yeah, they were, it makes sense. Yep.
Yeah. So you got that, Catherine?
And so who?
The one on page 11 goes to page 13, and you have Nick and Phil.
In fact, I made, if I may, I made the motion for the rail trail, because I remember I added "with the final design coming to the board" on my motion.
Yeah. You made the motion, and Phil seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, are we good with that?
So just swap the two.
We're good with those corrections? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. All right, it's 6:10, and this is a time when we take comment from the public. Anyone like to speak, just come on up, and if you can limit your comments to a couple of minutes, that we appreciate it. Anyone? Okay. Chief, anything you want to, you're public, too. Okay. Okay, next is our Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting schedule is in your packet. Tuesday, we have the 250th Committee Meeting and EDC. Wednesday is HDC at Grassmere and Conservation Commission, and Thursday is HR Meeting and then Planning Board Meeting. Your consensus folded tonight, AP warrants for 2010 and 2011.
Can I need a?
Motion to accept the consensus vote.
Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. And you also have assess the recommendations for veterans' tax credits, MAP 14, Lot 15A, MAP 2, Lot 65-3, and elderly exemption for MAP 36, Lot 65, and 2010 tax share abatements for MAP 9, Lot 13-12-4.
All right. Motion to accept the assessors' recommendations.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you. Planning, smits, and easement for drainage, drainage ditch maintenance, and detention pond maintenance at 134 Lindsay Way. This is a result of a new four-lot subdivision on Lindsay Way as part of the approval process.
I need a motion that we can have discussion if need be. A motion to approve or disapprove?
Yes, a motion to approve the drainage and maintenance easements.
Is there a second?
34.
For discussion?
134 Lindsay Way.
I'll make the second for discussion. All right. This was in 4A?
Yes.
And I know we've had some discussions in the past.
Some.
Yeah. With regard to detention pond maintenance, and was there anything, you know, unique to this one, other than what we have discussed in the past?
And there was no notes associated with this, so I'm assuming this has been fully through the planning.
Yes, yes, and DPW is aware of it. It's part of the whole drainage system for the road.
And it, it appears to be drainage, drain lines, drainage ditches, so there's no detention ponds indicated here, which was.
Yeah, number 11.
Oh, there's 11, mhm.
With the board's permission, how much should I throw my own two cents in here? When I read this, typically we get like a memo from someone.
Well, there is a road tracking.
Yeah, I know, I just, it, yeah, it's not very explanatory, and so here we are, we're expected to vote on something, and we've had a lot with this Blackbriar, we've talked a lot about these easements and maintenance, et cetera, and I'm kind of, where does this jive in with the whole, and does anybody, I don't mind putting this off for another week, I mean.
Were you on the planning board when the subdivision went in, Phil?
I was on, well, part of it, but I think, I think what needs to be done is, I think the board does need to have some additional information, and the board should be aware of what they are, because these, as things come forward, so that we know what we have to maintain, because what these do, I mean, when they come through, they seem like a very simple and obvious subject that comes in here, oh, it's gone through the planning board, fine, we all vote on it, without fully understanding the implications and the resources that are required to do this, and how many of these we are, and the fact that we don't even have the resources to do them, and we haven't been doing them, but they're going to keep, the requirements from the state are more complicated, they keep changing, they keep downshifting more and more requirements on us, and we need the, we need the resources to do it.
Wow. What's the pleasure of the board here?
If I could extend that concern, in that, to me, a plan would have been easier to understand this, rather than six pages of distances and angles. And I guess one of my questions is, who drafted this? Presumably, the, an attorney for the grantors, and therefore.
We have a standard template that Attorney Drescher had put together a long time ago, and then staff.
So you know it's based on a template from?
Yes.
Okay, that's information that would have helped, to have someone explain.
Well, that's how it has been done in the past, so I don't think the attorneys have looked this over, but the original template was developed by Attorney Drescher, and then they pick and choose what applies to that subdivision.
Nick?
Just two questions. One, the grantors, is this detention basin easement on one lot, or is this the developer? In other words, how is this different from the Blackbriar? Is this in an area that's going to be a homeowners' association? Is it a?
Nobody knows.
Is it on private property? And then the second question would be, how does this detention pond differ, or how is it similar to the design for the Blackbriar? Whereas I think Selectman Devanza mentioned, it's a, that's a unique one that requires specific vegetation.
But that's what's coming, all of them are going to be that, and we have some others.
All right.
It is on private property, according to this easement. How it compares to the Blackbriar detention pond, I couldn't tell you. There isn't enough detail here.
That would have been private property, too, it would have been homeowners' association.
Then it goes, then it goes on to say that the town has right to cut and remove vegetation and maintain that, make the detention pond.
I think it goes to what Phil says, and when it came up during the Blackbriar, the question is, will the town be accepting these retention ponds and doing the maintenance? That's the big, that's the big picture question.
With the understanding of what's involved.
And I agree with that, and we didn't, we touched on it at Blackbriar, and there was, and there was some that said, you know, we better, you know, there were some that looked at it as maybe the responsibility of those people who are utilizing it, and I know I just want to finish, and I, and I know I started, kind of started with the idea that it's just part of drainage period, so we have people in different parts, so I think not just the idea of the easements on this one, we need the full number, you know, as we go forward, we need to grab the big question, what's the full number of these, what are the costs, what is the maintenance for it, and we're going to make a decision on the bigger piece, instead of looking at these small ones, and.
And I think the million dollar question is, do we have a choice here?
And I don't think we do.
When we require detention ponds, do we have a choice in terms of maintaining them? Or are we required to maintain them, whether they're on private property like this one, where we need an easement, or whether we take the Blackbriar and it's on the property that we take? Is there a requirement to maintain detention ponds when it's a requirement of the planning board to put it in, to the subdivision?
Right, and I guess to carry that a little further, the thing of it is, is to have a full discussion, so that we are aware of this, and if there are any things that is causing us a difficulty, and we have a preference of which way to do it, we need to get some feedback to the planning board, so that.
That was where I'm going. For all intents and purposes, we're going to defer this a week or two, until we can get more clarification, and whether that's from Brian and/or a combination of Carl, so be it. The bigger question, though, is that we're going to see this more into the future, and which route would we like to go? Is there, is the proper route just to exercise our rights to speak as, on the planning board, or do we want to hold a joint meeting with the planning board to start to discuss some of these things? And one of the, there's the planning piece, which obviously, independently-elected board, and we have to, they follow their ordinances, must be respected. Board of Selectmen, independently-elected board, must execute on any type of legal obligations that the planning board may put on either the town, or on the developer, or the homeowner. And similarly, I know that, you know, the Board of Selectmen in the past, and the planning board have kind of butted heads a little bit on cul-de-sacs and hammer, what do you call it, hammerheads, and all these other type of road configurations, which DPW has stated cost, they're more time-consuming to maintain, et cetera, but at some point, whether it's cul-de-sacs, whether it's these detention ponds, or other things that we're seeing with drainage, we have to start to attach a price, a cost, you know, and I know each one of them may be different, but it's really hard for us to make a business case argument to the planning board to say, okay, we know that you're approving these, but do you know that they will require maintenance every X amount of years? When that happens, it will require a crew of X amount of people to go in and cut brush. It may require X amount of capital costs, so on the average, the average detention pond may cost us X amount of dollars to maintain. Then when we multiply how many we have right now, versus how many that you may plan, these are costing the community X amount of dollars, so just keep that, you know, in mind. Now, it doesn't, I, I just think that that case has to get made. It's really easy to say that we want these, and maybe we're being, with the new regulations, it's now, you don't really, they don't, their hands, right, their hands are tied, but I think what's getting lost sometimes in this translation is that whether it's EPA, or whether it's DES, these regulations are coming down, we have no choice, but they're costing us a lot more money. And, you know, I'm glad we have a state rep here who can hear this conversation, but ultimately, this is where, you know, the rubber, you know, does meet the road. I mean, we can have all these regulations, but it costs money to, you know, to do all this.
I'd like to add, is DPW maintaining a data base?
Right.
Of where all these sites are located, and when they're being maintained, so that they can budget wisely into the future.
I think you were going close to where I was commenting there, and so when, if you, I don't know if you're going to be meeting with Carl before this, for some reason, I have this number of, in the 70s, I think he said, that we might have already, but if we could see how many we have, what's the, and then I don't need, I'm sure he doesn't have a schedule filled up, but I'd be more inclined to go with something, an idea, or at least a ballpark of how many we have, how many have to be maintained on a yearly basis, so we see how that revolves out, and going back to what Phil said, you know, what would be an estimated cost with the current regulations to keep them maintained.
Current regulations say if you have a major event, you must go out and inspect, and determine whether or not you have to do maintenance right then, and no less than once a year.
So if you had a very significant rainfall, you may have to go out and inspect all of these, to make sure they haven't been compromised, or, so.
But there's that vegetation piece, right?
Right.
Yeah, the new regs include the vegetation.
Right.
So you have to make sure that you don't have certain types of trees starting to grow in there, you have to maintain, they specify the types of vegetation that's in there, so, and how often it has to be cut, and as Sue mentioned, after a certain type of storm, you have to go there, but you have, how many times, what, they give you the minimum amount annually that you have to go in there, when you're supposed to do this. I mean, you have to have people that can go in there and identify what's growing in there, and what's not supposed to be in there.
I think this goes also in the, I'm going to put this, make a note to myself, you know, I know we have some of these all-boards meetings, I think this is definitely a topic for an all-boards meeting, and it's not so much, I mean, obviously, the maintenance of these structures is an issue, but I'm talking about a lot of other regulations that we have on the environmental side, land use side have an impact on our operations, and we can't, we have to just at least have a meeting of the minds. I was thinking about this as I, in our folders, we get copies of memos for people who want to put a shed up, when it's 70 feet from a surface water, and the amount of time that it takes, our code enforcement officer is the one getting the calls, writing the letters, following up with different entities, then they're going before a conservation commission, because they're putting a shed that's 10 by 10, next to a stream that is, you know, 50 feet away. Again, I'm, I understand why these things were put in place, but there is a huge cost, and I look at it from, we have a person right now that does dual job, they do code enforcement and economic development, and to think that, you know, we're enforcing that, but we have somebody who could be bringing business in, but yet we're busy working with 10 by 10 sheds, I don't know, concerns me, and I think maybe that's some of the conversation that we need to, we need to have. So I'll put that as a, as an item, and I know we've done that last year, maybe it's time again to have another, you know, type of meeting in that regard. So we're going to postpone this discussion for another week or two, whenever we can get.
We had a motion on the table and a second, so.
Right, so I will withdraw my second, if the motioner will withdraw, that was you, Selectman Pierce.
I will.
Okay.
So I concur, we need more information, and I wrote down some questions that Selectman Fornier asked about, I should gather from DPW.
Okay, moving along. Household hazardous waste collection grant application is in your packet at 4B, and Carl is seeking a vote of the board to authorize him to apply for this annual grant.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Yes, I'll make the motion to apply for this household hazardous waste collection grant.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
At 4C in your packets, you have a revised annual warrant, and tonight, well, let me tell you the changes first. It went to DRA and to Attorney Drescher, as it usually does. I have not yet heard back from Attorney Drescher, but DRA wanted to see the CBA articles in their format, their new format, so same numbers, just different format, so that's why that's highlighted in your packet. And also on the petitioned article for disability exemption.
Hold on, five.
Okay.
Why is fiscal year 2011 not there?
Because it's, just below it, just below it.
It would have been.
And further to raise appropriately, they want the upcoming year separated out.
So they call it the current fiscal year?
Yeah, because when people are voting.
Well, I would like to add one thing.
Okay.
Then, for the current fiscal year 2011.
Okay.
No, I agree, as part of the chart appearance.
I'll put it in parentheses, 2011?
That's fine.
That's fine, or just right after current fiscal year 2011, comma, such and such.
Without that, it's confusing.
Yep.
All right. And the other, so that was the same change in four and five, and on the article 13.
You know, hold on. I've seen, I've seen these warrant articles done many times, and I don't recall them seeing, looking that wacky. I'm being serious. I can go pull them out, and.
But this is probably new.
This is their new format. They say, we prefer you use our format.
I, I, when I first read this, I'm looking, when this chart appearance, I'm looking for, where's 2011?
Yeah.
And that, whatever the amount is for that year, and then the next year, and to me, that, the chart appearance is more logical.
So add 2011?
Yeah, I just don't, I just think it looks so confusing.
And that's how I've done it in previous years, when I did a chart format, I did 11, you know, the three years, or the five years, whatever it was.
That's, that's one of the, that's one of the points.
It also gives the appearance that we're not talking about 2011, and there was, our negotiation was 2011.
No, I just doesn't.
So it looks like you're just starting on a 2012, 2013.
Why don't we do that? We'll do 2011, 12, 13, and put the dollars.
It looks like you're looking at, it looks like you're looking at a two-year contract on 2012, 2013.
And leave the rest of it, and we'll still put 2011 after fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, I got it.
I, well.
We don't need that for.
Going back to, you're saying you're just going to add in the 2011, you're going to leave the format, but put in the 2011?
Yeah, I'm going to, it'll.
But rather than it being.
Side of each other, it's going to be up and down.
Right.
One, two, three.
Boom, 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 right.
Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
All right. You done with those?
Yeah.
All right. And article 13 is a petitioned article for an elderly disability.
Disability.
Not elderly, I keep saying that. Exemption for the disabled.
Right.
Sorry. And this was a petitioned article, and the word that was missing is you have to have been married for at least five consecutive years, so she wants consecutive years in there.
Who's the petitioner?
No, the DRA.
Well, we can't change something if it hasn't been.
Yeah, you can't make it technically correct.
Technically correct. What does technically correct mean? We were not given, another petitioner on article 15 was not given that same, right?
Yeah, except that this is in the RSA.
Okay, oh, this is taken verbatim from an RSA?
Not verbatim, but.
I guess I have a little difficulty, since it's a petitioned article, and you're saying to make it technically correct, but how do we know what the intent of the petitioner was?
It doesn't matter, even if the intent was five years married and not consecutive, the law states they must be married five consecutive years.
But that's not my point. I understand what the law says, but was that the intent of the petitioner, or was the intent of the petitioner to have it this way, and now the person is going to say that I put in a petitioned article?
Yeah.
And you changed it, my intent was to do that, I mean, we can't, we don't know the intent of the petitioner.
But the law allows you to change a petition article to make it technically correct.
Maybe that should be done at the deliberative session.
That was my point.
Okay. That's fine. I can, and like I said, I'll probably hear back from Attorney Drescher this week sometime, and he'll probably comment on DRA's changes.
Anything else?
That was it, the DRA.
Now we have to vote. Recommendations on each of these. And I'm just trying to, I got, I got two employees here that I'd like to try to get through.
Okay.
Not that I don't, I don't, I don't want to postpone this, but I'd rather have our folks go home if they need to, so let's do this, let's skip to the, we'll come back to the annual warrant vote, let's go to the draft fireworks ordinance, and the fire chief is here, this is on 4D in our packets.
Do you have a copy, chief?
I have a copy.
Good.
Ethan memorized it.
Good evening, chief.
Just to draft up a, an ordinance to address fireworks, just to give a little history, and it took me, it's a history-taking, in rescuing some of the old, some of the old ordinances, in 1935, I believe, there was an ordinance that was, that was signed by the then Board of Selectmen, said that in order to fire off fireworks in the town of Goffstown, you needed a permit. And then later, after some more research, we discovered that there was another ordinance which piggybacked that one back in the 80s, that was passed by the Board of Selectmen then, saying that. That was passed by the Board of Selectmen then, uh, saying that, uh, the selectmen shall not issue permits for fireworks. So, in a sense, you just couldn't fire off fireworks, period, in the town of Goffstown, I believe that was the intent. Uh, but here we have the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, and, and there seems to be a wish and want to have a public display of fireworks. And with the ordinances the way they are now, um, you just couldn't have them have it. Uh, so with that, uh, I developed this draft ordinance, uh, where it addresses a couple ways. The, the state of New Hampshire allows communities to, to either allow permissible fireworks and to permit fireworks displays within the community, or not. So in this particular sense, after discussing it at length with the police chief, um, it was our opinion that, uh, we call consumer fireworks, or what they used to call class C fireworks, uh, is something that you could buy at some of the retail centers around here, and then, uh, display them, uh, on your own. Uh, would be something that, that Goffstown probably wouldn't be a, a good community for that. Because we have very tight knit areas in, in neighborhoods, uh, where it'd be problematic with noise and other fire hazards. And, uh, to make, to make a process, uh, so people could do that would be, be a problem. Also, we wanted to look in the fact that, uh, the sale of fireworks in, in town would be addressed within the same ordinance since while we're here. So in that one also, does that also. So in a sense, we define what fireworks are by looking at the state laws and the state rules, and what, what fireworks are, and what permissible fireworks are within the state, and, uh, it comes down to, as far as this ordinance goes, it says, we're only gonna allow in the town of Goffstown, display fireworks only, uh, which is the old class B, class B style fireworks under, under the code. And what that means is you'd have a licensed, uh, shooter, we call them shooter or vendor, come in, um, set up a display, and be in charge of that, that display, and shoot it off with, with the police and fire chief, um, in concurrence of making sure it's a safe display. So selling, selling, uh, permissible fireworks or consumer fireworks and shooting or, or actually having consumer fireworks within the town of Goffstown will still not be permitted. And also in this, this ordinance, it gives the, the police department the ability to, um, seize or remove any fireworks that are not allowed within the town, town, uh, boundaries. So it cleans up a little bit where, where if somebody wants to do a display type, and also, we also looked into, uh, pyrotechnic special effects. Now some of the theater groups are looking into use of some, some, uh, special effects type of materials. Uh, they can be done safely, but, uh, they have to consult both the police and fire department, uh, to make sure they're using the right materials, that they're insured, and the person's actually licensed to, to shoot those displays off. Any questions?
Um, I have a couple of questions. First thing that comes to my mind, we also have a, um, ordinance for, uh, plastic.
Yes.
Diatomite and stuff. Is there any connection between the two, I mean, the, is there anything in this ordinance that should be in there that states that this doesn't include that? I mean, I'm just, you know, 'cause they do, you do light them and they do explode, so.
Right, right. This, I was try, trying to make sure that this ordinance, uh, stays true to the definition of fireworks. Obviously, you have certain similarities in the two products, but in the definition areas, we wanted to make sure that we defined the fireworks as what the purpose of that, that it is.
Right, I understand. Should there be something in here that explains that, or says that this excludes, this has no, there is, this is separate?
We, we can, we can make, make.
So there's no connect, so you can read it and a person knows?
We can make reference to that, if you like.
The other question that I had is, um, I have two questions. Do we need anything in here to allow for waivers of any type?
Typically, we put a waiver.
Well, some, if we haven't, sometimes we might get into a jam because the ordinance is passed and there's no provision for any type of a waiver. Uh, I just.
For example.
I, I don't know, I mean, sometimes you don't, can't think of it at the moment, but after the ordinance is passed, a while, something comes up down the road, and gee.
Look, we, we, we have created ordinances in the past that, you know, no park, the, the best example I can think of is the, is the boat ramp at, uh, the boat launch area at Glen Lake where the, where the trailers are kept, you can't park there unless you have a trailer. So when you wanna use it for, say, overflow parking or something, you can't, because the only ones with trailers can be, there's no waiver. So if you had an event, I remember, we had an event at the kindergarten school, we couldn't park there because you can't park there without, unless you have a trailer. So it's those types of things that you have to sometimes think a little bit out of the.
Fortunately, with, with fireworks, when I referenced the, there, there's state law that, that, that's pretty explicit in regards to the storage and use of fireworks, it's, uh, it's R S A one, one sixty A and B. Also, they have, um, administrative rules in regards to display fireworks also. Uh, we also have reference to N F P eleven twenty-three, so there's a lot of rules and standards where, you know, you have to comply to this particular ordinance. So when you're talking about giving a waiver, um, it'd be tough to extend beyond what the law and standard is.
All right, I'll throw the elephant in the room. I know that there's some neighborhoods that have fireworks during Fourth of July. Um, whether it be a small little roman candles to a bigger, let's say.
Riverfront.
The Maskey Lake. Display.
I have no idea what he's talking about.
Steve, I saw you on the boat. What, what does this do for the folks that they, they combine their monies and they have a neighborhood?
Again, those, those are consumer fireworks, and to, to make something fair, it could get very complex. Um, in other communities, I've seen them develop a, a permitting process for even displays like that.
Yeah.
Uh, where we, where the fire department, the police department would have to, to inspect the site to make sure that, um, it, it's not gonna be a safety issue, and, uh, or you're gonna have neighbors that are, that are, that are gonna be, um, okay with this kind of display. Uh, usually with, with the products that are out there now that are permissible consumer fireworks, uh, that I've seen some, some displays that I've come across is, is that they never knew it could get so big. Um, and they're really impressed, you know, that, that this little tube, when they light the fuse, gets really big. And, uh, sometimes they get out of hand. And again, that's why, uh, we're recommending that, both the police chief and myself, recommending that, uh, le, leave the fireworks to the professionals. Uh, they, they know what a certain shell size is gonna do, they know what the display is gonna look like, uh, they know how far to keep a safe area. And, uh, they've done it for, for a while, they're insured, so if something did go wrong, um, there's some kind of fallback that goes onto it. Versus if the, if the homeowner decides to take, you know, cases of this consumer fireworks and decides to light them off in the street next to a house or a shed, or, or God forbid, you know, bystanders, um, and somebody gets hurt or killed. Uh, it's something that we have to be careful in, in extending liberties to.
Thinking of my youth, and it's not good. Anyway.
Just, just follow up question to that. What is allowed?
What is allowed in Goffstown?
Well, if this passed.
Those little jumpy things, can you do those?
As far as the.
Sparklers?
Sparklers, this, this, this does not, this does not withhold, um, like the poppers, the, the, the party poppers, sparklers, anything that you typically.
Bottle rockets?
Bottle rockets are not permissible in the state of New Hampshire.
They sell them though, don't they, at these fireworks places?
They don't sell bottle rockets.
No?
No.
No. I mean, you can remember some of these fireworks.
You can buy the large ones, but you can't buy a bottle rocket.
Ah.
Yeah, the fireworks wholesalers, they may sell something that may not be permissible in the state of New Hampshire, but they'll allow you to take it across borders or what have you, so. Again, um, to the untrained consumer in this, in this field, uh, you may not realize what you're, what you're purchasing, and it could get out of hand.
This should be an interesting public hearing.
Question.
Chief, on the, um, penalties.
Loss of fingers, right?
It talks about, uh, fined an amount not to exceed maximum penalty provided by law. Do you know what that is?
I'd have to review that, but I believe it's a thousand dollars. I'd have to review that again.
And going back to our paper ordinances, is there any enforcement teeth? You go out, you find someone, or you issue a citation, they ignore it? Is this another one that goes to?
Well, that may be one where we have now, if, if that, if this gets passed on the ballot this year, we would have the ability to actually give them a summons.
Oh, on any local ordinance, if that passes, yes. To do a plea by mail?
Oh, the plea by mail, that might help us, you know?
Well, let me ask you a question.
Oh, no, I see, it's just a.
Let me just ask a question. Okay?
Bill, I didn't say that.
It's Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Okay, it's twelve o'clock at night, okay, and you hear this giant bang coming from your neighbors. Okay, now you call up and you say, gee, my neighbor just lit off an M eighty. And you go over there, the guy says, no, it wasn't, I fired my gun.
You can't fire a gun either.
It had a blank in it.
Oh. I mean, there's always what ifs, but.
Let's go to the simple part I think most people are thinking about. When, when we talk fireworks, and we understand there are certain traditions out there in Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, Labor Day, Memorial Day. And it's really part of, oh, in a lot of communities, it's part of their, it's part of their festivities.
That's why we're talking about it.
And it's planned on, I, I mean, for me personally, the idea that this fades away or becomes not permissible is not acceptable. There, there has to be something that we can think a little, you know, outside the, the box on this, but to say we're not going to any longer have fireworks unless there's a professional there, you, you, you've taken away from, from those festivities. Um, and I'll ask this question, I guess, I mean, there are those periods or areas of time, uh, do we have a problem with people being injured, et cetera, with these things? Have we, you know, I mean, is there a problem, I guess, is the question first?
I, I know that we haven't had an injury since I've been here, but I, I know that we've had some fires that have been started by fireworks.
But as far as injuries, you've been here how long?
Three and a half years.
Three and a half, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I don't think this is something we just, just shut down.
Nick, you have a.
I got, I. Chief, currently, it's a gray area if, or if not, these are, but if, if my neighbor is firing off fireworks and I call in police department and fire department, currently, what is the recourse?
Currently, it's not permitted in the town of Goffstown to fire any fireworks.
I understand that.
Without a permit.
But I'm a neighbor and I want somebody to come and take care of the neighbor who's got a fireworks display.
I, I believe the police department has the only authority to confiscate that, those materials.
Can they, can they issue a citation?
I believe they would do it for, as, as a noise, noise, perhaps.
I, I guess where I'm going is, are we creating an unintended consequence where there is now an ordinance where individuals will be calling, could potentially be calling, and we are now obligated because we have an ordinance to send a police officer to issue a citation, or, and I'm sure they don't do that the first time, they're gonna just inform the person that there's.
And or, for the purposes of what we're talking about, a very narrowly defined ordinance that says any display fireworks, uh, needs to be, you know, I mean, this, this could be very narrowly defined, it's to say any display fireworks needs, just, uh, I mean, you're, you're explaining what that is, and it has to be approved by the police and fire chief, then that's a completely different story. So if somebody is, you know, doing something like that, they would have to have gotten a permit or something, which is different. As opposed to, say, somebody lighting off consumer type stuff.
Is this being done to address the two hundred and fiftieth?
That's what was asked. What was asked, I was, I was told that in order to have fireworks in Goffstown, we needed an ordinance because it did not, there was no legal authority to allow us to fire off fireworks in Goffstown.
Could, could, okay, could we draft a one-time ordinance that for this occasion, we are going to authorize? I'm just saying, just, not to reinvent the wheel, or not to create a whole host of.
I guess, I guess kind of a follow-up on that. New Boston has fireworks.
Do they ever?
Every year.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
What do they do?
Do they have any one of those?
For the, they have them for the, um.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
Mariner's fireworks.
Okay, um. Do we know what authority New Boston has that they, they regulate that, probably?
I'm not sure if they have a, if they have a per, permitting process, I know the fire chief works with the vendor, um, to make sure that he or she is licensed, and then they, they supervise the site during the shoot. Uh, I believe also New Boston allows for the use of permissible fireworks, they're on the list in the state that does that.
Well, I guess I was just bringing that up, was if maybe there's some way that, it seems to me if New Boston can do it, I don't, that we should be able to.
But when you say permissible, you're talking those, um.
The state.
Consumer fireworks.
State com, consumer fireworks.
So in New Boston, if, essentially, if I live in New Boston and I go buy consumer fireworks, it's permissible to use them in that town?
Correct.
I mean, we could draft it that way also.
I guess, that, my only comment, this ordinance could have been drafted only to address the, uh, display fireworks. But, uh, I, I realize the chief is trying to incorporate a longstanding ordinance and update it through, now, this.
Next. I was gonna say, under one sixty B seven, any municipality fair, association, amusement park, or other organization may apply for a permit to display fireworks.
Correct, and this is where.
Through the state?
You have to fill out the state application for it, and then you would fill out a local permit, if you have one. Uh, basically, the state, the state form points you in the direction of, of the authority in each, each of the communities to follow up and sign up on it, which would be the fire chief and the police chief.
I, I was just sort of gonna end this one.
Well, I was just gonna ask, so is that something that Goffstown could do, is just apply for a permit for our two hundred and fiftieth fireworks display?
But the, I believe the current ordinance says that you, doesn't allow the Board of Selectmen to.
Doesn't allow anyone, right?
Yeah, it, so it doesn't allow the board to issue permits.
I guess, follow-up to where I was asking about the waiver, so there's no, in other words, in that ordinance, there is absolutely no provision for any type of a waiver to allow us to use org, fireworks.
All right. I'm, I'm getting the sense that the board, the intent was to enable us, as a town, as a community, to have a fireworks display for the two fifty. And perhaps rather than creating laws that may be impossible to enforce, or, uh, to just maybe do a one-time ordinance, or a very narrowly defined ordinance that has, which, which has to do with display fireworks. Um, and I think that's where, so rather than trying to reinvent the wheel here, it seems like we, we're just trying to accomplish one, one thing here.
Question.
Yep.
Could we get a copy of the current ordinance?
Sure.
Let's kind of see.
It's pretty busy.
And since, and since we're on this, since we're on this topic, I am going to assume that, I know Lieutenant Connor is working with these vendors, and I think he's meeting one tomorrow, I think. I know the two fifty committee is, is meeting tomorrow, but I, I'd like to go, and go back to them with some direction from the board with regard to the selection of a, of a vendor. I, I'm not so sure that I feel comfortable with the, you know, low bid option, I, I feel more, a little more comfortable with the fire chief or the police chief and, and the, and the experts like Lieutenant Connor and such, saying, okay, here's what we're looking for. Here are reputable people that we know they know what they're doing. Um, it may cost a little bit more, but I, I would just feel more comfortable knowing that we've got reputable people that are gonna be lighting off uh, these, these, uh, display fireworks, I'm concerned about that.
I'm just asking, in order to be, to be a commercial fireworks vendor, or, don't they need to be licensed by the state as competent?
They're, they're licensed under the state and they get a letter of competency by, by, by the commissioner of, of safety. And, uh, what I always done in my previous, previous towns is, uh, got a list of departments or, or towns that they've done displays in, and I give them a call and find out how responsible they have been.
Yeah, the, the key with this one is that, um, the, the two fifty committee is a, is a subcommittee or ad hoc committee of the community. I'm, I'm trying to, I wanna do everything above board here, the, the money for this is mostly gonna come from private donations, um, private fundraising. How do you want me to approach this, because Bill has to start working on, do, do you want an R F P, are we comfortable with? Uh, there are only, I'm, I'm told, a handful of vendors in New Hampshire that actually do this. And Bill has spoken with some of them already, he's spoken with one who he said that it was not a good impression at all, I know that. And I don't know if they're, they were certified or not, and I'm just trying to get some direction from you folks as to, are you comfortable with letting Lieutenant Connor and the Chief kind of steer that selection process, knowing that, you know, we're only doing this once, it's not, it's an on, it's not an ongoing thing. And, uh, there's probably not gonna be any, little if, and if not any taxpayer money being spent towards this. What is this, what is the sentiment of the board?
I'm fine with that.
Sure. Is that, is, is it okay with the Chief making that, and Lieutenant Connor and those experts making that call?
That's fine, yeah.
Choosing the...
Choosing the vendor.
The vendor, that would be.
And the amount of display is being endorsed by the committee.
Right.
Well, just, just a point, a question here. Uh, when, when you're selecting its vendor, are we talking at what, when you're doing that selection process, are you talking the amount you're spending, et cetera, I mean, huh?
Yes.
I mean, 'cause you don't wanna be selecting a vendor, then, then...
No, no, there's a certain budget that, that the committee is working with, and, and I think, that we're, they're struggling with, okay, do we save a thousand dollars and go with a vendor that maybe doesn't have a reputation in, in this area? Or do we spend a thousand dollars more and go with someone who has lit, you know, has, does shows all the time, well-known in, in, in New Hampshire and probably through...
But my, my, my point of question is that when you go there, you would need to know what your funding is going to be for this.
Yeah, and they, they'll have that information, it's just a matter of...
Oh, you're ready, oh, I didn't know if you were at that per, per, at that point yet, okay.
A couple of things when you look, when you look at displays, and I'm, I'm sure Lieutenant Connor's kinda brought this up and to the committee, is, the first thing is we have to look at the site, um, for example, some of the shooters will tell you, okay, in order to be an effective display from, from a certain site, you may have to shoot higher than a typical display. So instead of getting, say, three, four inch diameter shells, which at, they're at such a cut, cost, you may have to go up to eight or ten, depending on how far you need to shoot it up or, or display, so that'll be in discussion, and again, that's, that's a cost factor.
Okay.
One last question, have we decided what this is, or do we have an option, spots?
I know Lieutenant Connor has been discussing a couple of different, there aren't that many, you know, choices, so...
I think what we're gonna recommend, as far as, you know, Lieutenant Connor and myself, we're talk, talking back and forth, is we're gonna have to take some, either two or three of the favorite vendors and take them out around town and, and have them suggest where a suitable site might, might be.
The summit?
Summit could be one, it could be, we have to look at it.
Visible everywhere.
No, people have, yes, that's not, that's not a joke, yeah.
You go to Lake George every year, they fire them off of, uh, I think it was the mountain, uh, it's a mountain, but that's where they fire them off, the top, 'cause you do see it from every location, I'm just kinda curious where these spots are, what spots you're eyeing, that's all. You are correct with that.
Chief, is the most current ordinance the one in nineteen thirty-five?
There's, there's, that's the original ordinance?
Okay.
And then there was a back...
Tell me it was updated.
Phil, you saw that one?
The backup one, I believe, was in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five.
Nineteen eighty-four, okay.
He's saying both of them.
Oh, tough crowd.
Yeah, aren't they, huh?
He had time to think about it for a while, wanted to make a change.
Yeah, I remember that, that one. All right.
Yeah, but if you take a look at it, and that one includes artillery shells.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll work with, I'll get the copy of the, uh, the current, the current ordinances to, to, so you maybe discuss if there's simple language that we can adjust to the latest one, I believe in the eighties, that could suit your needs.
Or just throw in a waiver, take that one, throw in a waiver clause or something, and, I don't know, right? I mean, there's certain, certainly ways to skin the cat without creating...
Well, wait till you read it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Well, if it's anything like the nineteen thirty-five one.
Okay, all right, so, yes.
Okay, after you, I was just gonna request the next item, if we were moving off of this.
Yeah, we're gonna move off this, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, with the board's permission, if there wasn't an issue with the, the non-public hiring?
Was there any questions with that?
Is it for per DM EMS?
Yeah.
Per DM EMS, yes.
And the Chief can go home. You're good, everybody's good?
Make a motion to accept the Department head's recommendation.
Seconded, Vice Selectman DeVance, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
How long is, uh, Janice gonna, how long that might be?
Oh, fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes, Jan? Same RSA.
Same RSA on fireworks?
No. Now, had you gone into non-public.
Janice is a large consumer, she buys a lot of them.
She shoots off a lot of fireworks.
She transports them over state lines from Cape Cod.
We have folks here, I, I assume it's for the Blackbriar, you're here for that, let's have that discussion first. This way you guys can get home as well. So we're gonna skip around, if that's right with the board. So, we held a couple of, uh, public hearings with the acceptance of the Blackbriar open space land. And I do not believe that we heard any one from the public oppose. I do believe we did hear many from the public who were in favor. Members of the Conservation Commission, open space, et cetera. The gentleman, the developer Keith Martell spoke to us as well on a couple of occasions. And I'm trying to think what else, uh, I think it was pretty much about, I think we've got, we've got the answers to the questions that, that were raised. Is there anything else that, you know, the board would like to discuss? Before we vote?
Well, we didn't get...
We didn't get the answers at point.
No, no, we didn't get the discussion with Public Works. There was a whole issue of the discussion with Public Works, I mean, Carl mentioned some things to us, and we never got any information back on that, 'cause...
I thought that he did, but...
Pertaining to...
No, I thought the question, or maybe I, I, I apologize, maybe I missed it, I thought there was a question regarding wh, uh, from, from a revenue and what that meant, that, I don't know if we received that information, that's the only piece I thought we were missing.
Can you be more specific?
Uh, there was a question, I think, I thought, well, I thought Philip had, had brought the question forward, but, uh...
Refresh me.
I don't know if I wanna know, but anyway, uh, but, uh, I, the question, I thought the question that came up regarding if, in other words, if, if you take the land, part of that process, if we, if we took it, took it, and how much that meant in tax, tax revenue.
We did that, we got that from Scott, and it was minimal, it was almost, it was negligible.
Oh, we, yeah, we got that, minimal, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So that, that was taken, that was taken care of on that end. What, what specifically...
What are the resources to maintain this detention pond?
Yeah, there were a couple of things.
Do we have the expertise that, or in the equipment?
Right, and he said that we may have to purchase brush cutting, I, I know he said that, right?
Point of, point of order on there, I think that issue, we already voted to accept the drainage and the detention basin. I think we already...
Yeah, that's moot.
I, I think that, that issue is already taken care of, I think we already voted this board, that, I think we discussed and said we didn't wanna place the developer because this was um, a state-driven mandate, and we didn't want him to be in the middle, and this planning board...
Yes, we separated those two out.
We separated that out, and I think we accepted the drainage.
When I came back from the planning board, because my question was specifically to the planning board about this, and the answer was for the Board of Selectment to read their minutes. And their recommendation was upon a, um, agreement acceptable to the Board of Selectment.
Conservation easement.
Yeah.
Agreeable to the Board of Selectment.
Correct.
Look, look, okay. I think the, the issue, I, I think we did separate the two, we didn't wanna hold Mr. Martell up uh, with regard to that, the issue before, you know, the board is, um, are we willing to take this as, uh, town-owned property, that's one. And, and secondly, does the town, you know, the, uh, some discussion, I think, with, with open space was that they would be in, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, caretaker, help me out, um, steward, a steward of the property, whether that would be an independent entity, P. Pascataqua, the Land Trust, or, or would it be the town? And there were some discussions, even in some of the public comment, was that, one, the conservancy might be better suited than, say, the town in terms of enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, so, then the other, the other issue that arises is that if we were to take it as town land, if we, if we, what would the deed kind of look like? Would it just be always in conservation in perpetuity, or would it be just town land, which I'm not saying it would be developed, you know, down the road, it's kind of difficult to develop that parcel, but, you know, what would be the uses of it, you know, into the future?
I, I view this action as two steps, one, to accept the land for town ownership, and then the next step is the sign, the conservation easement.
Easement, correct, I agree.
To some other party.
And to come up with an acceptable process.
You know, we looked at it, we looked at a draft, we looked at a potential draft of that easement last week or the week before, and, and to me, it was premature to even think about looking at that, 'cause first we had to accept the land, get it registered at the County Registry of Deeds, and then we would discuss how we would like to formulate the conservation protection of this land. Two separate steps. So tonight, you don't even need to look at the acceptance.
Is the, is the board in favor of that approach, just taking a look at the acceptance or the non-acceptance issue this evening? And then thereafter would be a discussion about the conditions of the easement at a subsequent meeting or meetings?
And that, that second discussion could be, doesn't have to be immediate, whereas, uh...
I'm seeing a couple of heads nod, is that...
I, I think he makes a good point.
I'm just concerned about what the recommendation, but I thought the recommendation from the planning board was subject to an acceptable easement.
I don't think so, I thought it was a...
I have it.
Yeah.
Um, Colas Adams made a motion that the planning board recommend to the Board of Selectment that the town accept the open space parcel with the understanding that it is managed by a third party, and there is an acceptable conservation easement with the town and PLC. That, that was his motion.
But it doesn't say it has to be all one evening, one motion?
No, no, I agree.
It could be two months apart.
But he's saying a third, a third party.
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess my question is, why do we need a third, I mean, why do we need a third party?
I mean, just take something off the table if you go in that direction, so, I, I, I'm gonna say, I have no problem accepting the land. I would like to have further discussion as to what are the limitations of the land once it is, um, once the town owns it? And that's my only...
Concern.
And whether or not we need a third party, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but I, I just don't think we need to have that discussion tonight.
Question, um, sort of a point of order, Sue, what did the notice for public hearing tell the public?
Whether, um, that you were, what's in your domain is to accept the land, and that was your decision on accepting the land. And during that public hearing, I believe, we asked David what would be the conditions of an easement, and he said the Board of Selectmen would determine those, um, they draft up, and we do have one, and as soon as you accept the land, we'll send it off a legal, while you can review it, and then we'll send it off a legal review.
Two-step process.
Yeah, that's how, yes, Phil.
I guess the only question that I have is, what is the benefit to the third party for stewardship, or, I mean...
Right, and I think...
And I guess, the reason why I'm asking that question, because if we accept the land, have we extinguished any motivation for them to have stewardship?
Could have stewardship.
The third, the third party.
No, I think that the direction that we've been hearing is that it's recommended that it would be third-party stewardship. So the question is, is that, is that suitable for the board? I mean, I, I think it has long been stated that it would be preferred that it would be third-party stewardship.
Okay, right.
And, and the wording of the easement is then in question in terms of, you know, how that would be accomplished, but, now, so...
So if something like, I, I think, um, an example given during the public hearing was, we could do a select timber cut.
Right.
Who would do that? Would the steward do that, or would we author, and who sees the revenues from it?
The owners of the land would do it with the oversight of the conservancy.
Okay.
Jason, Jason Sacks, a representative from PLC, was, was there at the planning board, and he explained that, that
Okay.
the landowner does anything to the land, the, the Land Trust oversees to make sure that whatever's done on the land is done in accordance to the conservation easement.
Okay.
And the revenue would go back to the landowner.
Okay.
But to answer your question, Phil, I think having the PLC oversee and be the steward, it takes that responsibility away from, not away from, but off of the town, it, it provides for an organization that, that's what they do.
Well, I, I understand, and I...
To be the eyes and ears of the town to protect the land.
I guess where I'm coming from on it, I mean, if we're looking at the master plan, and the master plan talks about and what we're, what we're having a discussion, is that that portion of town should have a park. I mean, what other park do we have in the town that's a park that we have a third party? I mean, we manage all our own, we manage White Park, we manage the Fields, Serret Fields, we manage Barnard Park. So I guess the question is, is how this is accepted, or are we going to view it as a park, or are we going to, and we oversee it, or are we going to just accept it? And I guess part of the reason why I'm asking that is how we go forward from this point, if we ever have any more of these situations.
I think that Selectman Pierce was accurate, in my opinion, in terms of this is a two-step process. One, does the town want to accept the land? If the town accepts the land, then what method do we want to manage the land? Does the town wanna manage it on their own, does they, do they wanna have a third-party steward?
And would that be acceptable to the planning board since their motion included a third party?
Then, that'll be their choice.
Or the recommendation.
Yeah.
Right, it's a recommendation.
That's their choice, so...
But they said acceptable to the, to the, to the town needing a Board of Selectmen.
Right, so, I, I think, you know, I'm inclined, uh, this evening to just simply have the first question, um, resolved from the board, and that is the acceptance of the land, we did hold our two public hearings, did we, and I assume we didn't get twenty-five signatures?
No.
Uh, to the contrary?
It would've been fifty, right, but no.
Fifty, okay. So, um...
For this purpose, yeah.
Right, so, so that being said, unless there are objections from the board, I'll hold a, I'll, I'll take a motion to either accept or not accept the land, um, this evening, and then we can certainly schedule further discussions for the actual management of the land, if it is accepted, so, yes.
I'll make that motion in a second, I just want to clarify for Selectman DeVancea, it was on the thirteenth of December that we moved to accept the, post the site plans, road, and associated drainage structure upon successful completion.
After you mentioned it, I, I recalled it, that's correct.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um...
Accept?
Accept.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Blackbriar. There's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the Blackbriar open space land, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, um, let's do this. In, in a week or, or two, can we get, we have, we're gonna have questions with regard to the stewardship, I mean, David is here now, and I'm not gonna put it on the agenda now, but...
I can send you the draft easement.
Right.
And I should take a look at that, and we'll have a discussion next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue, does the, uh, the next step is giving the conservation right of this land to a third party? Does that have to go through a public hearing? We're, we're, you're giving away forever some sticks in the bundle concerning this land.
Forty-one fourteen? To acquire or sell?
Forty-one fourteen, I, you have any interest?
So it's interesting that you raised that point, I wonder if there's actually two, two more public hearings that may need to be held if we're going to be putting into a conservancy? Because now that we've taken it, now that we have taken it, now we're going to do something with it?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
All right. Nothing's easy. All right, next week then.
Next week what?
Prior, we're gonna have a discussion on this, you're gonna get a copy of the conservation easement, and any questions that you may have, we're gonna discuss them.
Could, could the draft easement that we've been presented a couple of weeks ago be reviewed first? Before we start the public hearing?
No, no, I'm not talking about a public hearing, no, we're gonna review the draft easement.
Ourselves. Oh, yeah, no, no, we wasn't talking about having a public hearing.
No public hearing, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a conversation about the draft easement.
And then, then we'll take it from there.
Right. While we're, just till we get our, we're, we're all going down the same path here. There are, there are a couple of routes to go, one is, is a rec, is to proceed in that, in that vein where it is a conservation easement that is, um, managed through a, a, a third party. The other is that it's not a conservation easement, and it's managed by the town, those are the two extremes, then there's something, and then there's probably something in the middle of that. The land itself, having walked it, in terms of future development, it would be tough. Not impossible, but difficult. So, you know, if we go one route, if we go the conservation route in perpetuity, this would never be developed.
I think one thing that we need to do, we also need to look and explore who the abutters are too.
Yeah.
Well, as part of an open space, it can't be developed anyway.
I was just gonna say, I'm not, I'm looking up the open space subdivision? Because there are require, or limitations on what you can do in open space.
Yeah, I know. David, I'll just get with you in a second. Any other questions from, from the board? All right, David, if you, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind coming up?
Oh, the very reason, David Neiman, Conservation Commission, and the comment I had in my hand, of course, Sue has already addressed, and that's the fact that our development regulations and our clustered open space regulations, I mean, this has already been set aside and designated as no further development. That's the whole purpose of this open space regulations that we have, so... Yeah, there wouldn't, there should not be any other development that would be against our own town's development regs. Thanks.
Can I get a clar, clarification on development? And I understand, you, you're on one thing.
Well, and I'll read, it's kind of, the definition is kind of ambiguous. It says, "A development pattern that arranges the layout of buildings in a compact area of the site so as to preserve and protect in perpetuity a portion of the site for recreational or natural open space as an integral part of the overall plan."
So, when you were using the word development, you meant as a recreational site?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what you were implying, correct, Phil?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Now, I'm not gonna say that we're gonna have, you know, twenty outdoor bocce, you know, courts or something, but I, I'm just, I, I just don't know what, I mean, it's limited what you can do there. And it's, obviously, it's more, um, it's more geared towards passive, person, passive recreation. But, you know, there are some spaces where you could, and we, we talked about a park, yeah. There are spaces where you could, you know, do something down the road. And that's one, and that's what I think we have to get our arms around, is that do we want to extinct, you know, what is, what do we define as recreation versus conservation? And do you wanna shut the door completely on there ever being a tennis court or a basketball court or a, uh, something that's a structure on that property versus just, you know, totally a nature preserve type thing?
Okay.
I would like to go into that conversation too.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we'll have that next week. At this point, um, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go into a non-public session for the next fifteen minutes. And that will be under ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, B, hiring.
I'll make a motion.
See, I'm, I'm, I'll make the motion, do I just need a second?
Is that something new, that's not in our packet?
Right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then a roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Seven.
All right, we're back on.
It is cold.
We have a, a couple of more pieces of business, um, and we'll just, we'll come back to the annual warrant in a second. Just a couple of different things. The, the next one is the clarification on out-of-state travel and overnight stays. And, Sue, what was the confusion?
Well, first of all, is it a cost issue that you wanna do this? Because sometimes, uh, members, department heads get that travel accommodations and the overnight stay all taken care of by their association, the professional association. So, in those cases, do you want to require a prior approval?
Do they do it on their own time?
Nope, they do it on town time.
Yeah, so that is, I would, I would think that if, it was based not only upon the cost, but also being away.
Okay. And, they won't have the exact costs, they won't start looking for airfare and accommodations until, um, you know, they start shopping now. So, do you want a list of the ones that they were planning to go to this year, where they are and when? And then, you can approve them, and then they can start shopping? Or do you wanna know those costs?
I, I would, it, it takes about ten minutes to just get an approximate cost. You can do a, an airfare search and a, I mean, we would have to understand that it's not gonna be exact...
Right.
Until they actually book the flight. But we would have an, you know...
Because that's what they do, they wait till the specials come out and, you know, get it at lower rates. So, you wanna see a list from each person that's planning to go to a conference that's overnight, out-of-state, or even in-state overnight?
I mean, they, I would think that you would know now where they all are in the given year. I mean, I, those things are usually not, there's a plan well in advance.
Usually, they're planned at least a year ahead, yeah.
Right, yeah. So, it shouldn't be that difficult to get.
Okay.
All right.
I'll get that.
Next is, uh, Senior Beacon.
Yes, um, I think we put it in F Y I so you could see the publication.
Yeah.
And, um, he did not get back to me today to let me know if they have a rack. But there, I had brought in an extra rack anyway.
There's room for four racks.
Yeah, the, um, the one that used to come here was a hunting and fishing one. The gentleman, I forget his name, Bill.
Hawkeye. Hawkeye?
Yeah, Bill, um...
I haven't seen it lately.
Same, same publisher.
Right, well, he passed away.
Who is the publisher of this?
Bill Ballum.
Who is the publisher of this?
Bill Ballum.
Was it, wasn't even, I, I...
And Vivian Ballum, they're two, um, but they're the same publishers of...
Yeah, but there was a local resident that used to bring it in. And, uh, they have him to bring in, and I had gotten that extra rack for them.
Because I looked for that in there.
It is the same publisher.
It was actually in the paper?
It is in the paper, yes.
And he said, I asked him about the, that one. He says, "Oh, yeah, we publish a Hawkeye too." And he says, "We can, if you want us, drop that off too, we can." He says, "Those disappear really quickly." He says, "I bring them to the, the area businesses, and they're gone real quick." He says, "You must have a lot of fishermen and hunters in town."
All right, any issues with that one?
And no cost?
No.
No, as long as there's room.
Yep.
Yes, there is room.
They're good, all right.
Um, I had two others, if, before we get to the annual warrant. The bids for the annual report came in last week. And here are the results. There were three vendors who submitted bids. And based, the base bid ranged for Case Printing for three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, Select Print Solutions for three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, Impure and Press with seven thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Right, Case Printing did it last year, they did a good job, they met the deadline, they weren't late. Um, and they actually did some extra changes without charging us. Uh, so I would recommend going with Case Printing for that base bid. And if we have additional pages or fewer pages, they'll take the necessary adjustments.
And the base bid was how many books?
Uh, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Plus ten spiral-bound ones that we use in-house.
And the question came up last year, how many did we go through? How many did we handle?
We had about five hundred left over, and we printed two thousand.
So, we didn't incur any additional book costs? Came in, we eventually paid what the base bid was?
Right. Yeah, the base bid last year was with two thousand books.
Do you anticipate the additional books?
Do I?
You know, the base bid.
I would go with the base bid of fifteen hundred, because...
Who was the other big bugaboo?
We can put them on CDs now pretty quickly.
Last year, we didn't include the pictures of the boards.
Right.
There were people who didn't, some people didn't like that.
Well, one, one thing about that is, what's good to have the pictures in there of people that are on the boards, because people who, citizens who see, who get it, they see who's on a committee, and they read, and they connect the face with the picture. So, when they see somebody, they say, "Oh, I don't know who's on a conserva," having a clue what they look like.
Yeah, unfortunately, that decision should have been made prior to today, because we, there's no way we'll meet the deadline of getting them pictures of every committee unless we set up a Saturday and have them all come in, sit down and take pictures.
You know, we had the same conversation last year.
What, what is the deadline?
Uh, to get to the printer?
Yeah, we had the same conversation last year, it was too late, I think that's what happened.
Hold on, I'm locked up here. Man, I could set up a day, as long, because I can't wait till the monthly meeting. If I set up a day and just have them come in, but I could do it that way.
What is the, the, the actual, how many meetings, what, how many boards or commissions will meet between now and the deadline?
Well, you will. The deadline to the printer, I think, is like, the Friday after the deliberative session?
We're just wondering if we hit all of the meetings?
There's only like two weeks left.
We can hit whatever boards or commissions are gonna meet.
Well, there's some this week that, yeah, but they like to know before, so they dress appropriately, so, you know. It might be, just be easier to, to do, you know, ten-minute blocks and just do it all on a Saturday.
Yep. Yeah.
Then you get a little more, um, you know, the same type of photo on each, the lighting's the same, everything's the same. Just set up a tripod with a camera.
And then, maybe a suggestion is, right after town meeting, when all the new boards are elected, we take photos for the following year?
The only problem is, is down the road, ten months down the road, you may have changes on a board.
Well, yeah, but that's life, I mean...
I'm just saying, I'm just...
No, I agree, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
But that moment in time, yeah.
This way, we have the pictures and they're done and...
You know, I think the same thing could really honestly be said about, um, the website too. I mean, I think the website should have the pictures of...
Photos of the boards.
Oh, yeah, the boards.
I thought they were supposed to be, that wasn't that our intent for the photographs to be online?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay, photos session.
Scott has his ultimate camera.
Well, and the other, the other thing to, to do, quite honestly, is, you know, obviously, you can, you know, you can take a group shot. The other thing is just to simply take a picture of yourself and it just, you know, you put them like that with the person's name underneath it, you know? I mean, that's another route, way of...
Dick, Dick just offered the G T V studio on a Saturday for photos.
You're correct, you can't, you can't do it U Books style if you, if you can't, if you can't get all the people, they could do it U Books style.
Okay, so we got that taken care of. Next.
Oh, oh, we get a ward?
Oh, yeah, need a motion to award the bid to Case Printing, I guess?
Someone.
Your second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Selectman Campesano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. And you have a request that came in today, um, from U N H Corporate Extension, John Newt. He's the county extension forester. Hillsborough County is planning to do a timber harvest during the summer of two thousand eleven on part of their property off Kennedy Hill Road. And they attached a map, must be for you, Dave.
A rail trail thing or something?
Up in the mountain.
This portion of Kennedy Hill is a class-six town road. The condition of the road has deteriorated because of abuse by all-terrain vehicles. We plan to add one truckload of gravel to an area of exposed ledge to make the road passable for logging trucks. RSA two thirty-six-nine requires written permission from the local, from the Board of Selectmen or the road agent before any alteration of a town road by private party. I'd like to request ten minutes during the Board of Selectmen's meeting on either Monday, January thirty-first, or Monday, February seventh, to seek the Selectmen's permission for this project. Next week, okay?
Show the rest. It's, uh, that's a block of county land.
The big question is if the board have any problems with it? Needs to be there.
That's what I was gonna say, in other words, if, if it was agreeable to Carl, and whatever was done, was done to his standards, would we have an issue with that?
Uh, I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah.
Right, so therefore, there would be a need for him to come.
And we had a legal case years ago on the mountain regarding a class-six road. And I think John, Judge Convoy, um,'s decision was, you can't widen it, you can't repave it, you can improve it to whatever condition it was, um, but that was it. So, this is in line with that, his request is.
Have you been up Kennedy Hill Road? I mean, using the word road is...
Yeah.
That's a loose term, using it loosely.
Does his application mention where the access to that property would be? I, I assume it's not.
It is Kennedy Hill Road, that's what he's, uh, looking to improve on.
So, but the other question that comes up, when do they intend on doing this?
I'm sure it's probably out, outside mud season, I bet.
Fifty, fifty logging trucks coming out on Mass Road.
You follow where I'm going, yeah, this is not...
It's gonna make a noticeable difference next to the, those two residences.
And, yeah, you don't have to come off Addison, I would assume, right?
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I can't do it in the winter and spring, well, if they did do it in spring...
I, I think, uh...
Well, this would be a good question for him when he gets here.
Yeah, but you know what? This is something that I, I feel comfortable letting Carl have a conversation and then let us know if there's any concerns. I mean, I, I don't know, I just don't, you think this is...
Well, I guess I might, I have a question though. They're not looking for permission to do the logging.
No.
They can use the road.
Right.
The road is not passable for the logging people. So, they wanna dump a, a load of gravel where there's this le, exposed ledge. And they need permission from the board to improve a class-six road.
I guess so, if I can just add something. I mean, if there's exposed ledge and you're putting gravel over the ledge, I don't know how the gravel...
Stays.
Yeah, and I guess the concern that I have is, we have four-wheelers? Or what are two, or, I don't know what they are, that are causing...
A T Vs, yep.
That, is there any thing that we've been able to do to curtail that? Because if they put the gravel there, and you have the gravel issue, you know, staying, you know, on rock, and you have those other vehicles coming over there, I mean, it would seem to me that it's gonna really deteriorate the road.
So, the issue is, is that they're gonna do a timber cut. They're gonna come in from one fourteen, Addison Road, going up Addison Road, making a right onto Longbrook, Longbrook then going to Kennedy Hill. So, they would be then, I'm going to assume, a logging truck is going to be going through Longbrook onto Addison. And my question for Carl is, does that pose any problems in terms of the integrity of the road? So, if you're gonna be putting all this tonnage of, of timber...
In spring.
Is it, no, well, it says summer, but...
Okay, but if it was spring, okay.
Right, I just, I, to me, that is the big issue. Would they disturb or damage any of these town roads in the logging process? Does it, you know, are these roads capable of withstanding the, um, the weight of these timbers? You know, because you're gonna be going Longbrook to Addison, and then you'll be going right on to, uh, Shirley Hill, then right up into a state road. So, that would be my question.
Is that the only way in, is through Addison, Longbrook?
That's what they said, they said access will be from Longbrook Road and Kennedy Hill Road, and a class-six road. But the only way to get to Longbrook is through Addison. And Addison is not the prettiest road in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, they like to repave that.
If, and if, and if Addison makes it back on to the reclamation part of it for the summer, which I don't know, depends on the budget.
Yeah.
It's not, no.
Well, I don't know about that one. That one's like a, one and a half million dollar roads.
More than we have in anyone here.
Yeah.
If it's done, it's in sections.
Right.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, why don't we tentatively schedule this person for, say, two weeks, is that what he requested?
Yeah, either next week or the week after.
Pick the latest date and say, listen.
Well, February seventh, yeah.
February seventh, let, let the.
Get Carl on it.
February seventh is our deliberative session.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Right.
So, he asked for January thirty-first or February seventh.
Next week.
Send it to Carl, get Carl's.
I mean, if Carl, if Carl can get a hold of him, have the conversation before the thirty, before the thirty-first, we're good, if he can't, it has to be further up.
He needs to know that he can't expect an answer from our board in one week, so, I mean, he might wanna give a call.
If not, it goes out, if not, it goes out past the seventh.
Exactly. So.
Okay.
All right, and is that it for your extras?
That's it for my extras, yes.
As we go back to the town warrant, foresee.
Actually, one more thing.
Okay.
At what point does the board want to call in, uh, their state reps and have a discussion, especially about revenues?
I was thinking about that today myself.
We just did that today in the city, had a meeting with our delegation, and, and there's some interesting things that are being proposed, reformulating the rooms and meals tax.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Uh, as you know, that when the state cut back their contributions to police and fire retirement by five percent a year, the past two years, that, that it was stated that was temporary just for that biennial budget. When they did away with shared revenues for those two years, it was again, just for that biennial budget, but now the state is having their difficulties and looking at revenues.
So this is an, this is an ASAP meeting.
Yeah.
We need to have this as soon as possible. Yeah, I think it's imperative that we have it.
First, first after the deliberative session.
Yeah, well, what do you think might be convenient for them, I mean, when, we typically do it, do it during one of ours, we have it as a separate, separate night.
We've had it, we've had it here, uh, at our meeting.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking about too is that when you get them all together, I don't mind taking the lead here, but there may also be, um, a combined, you know, school board need as well, 'cause they share the same type of issues on, on many occasions, so if we're gonna do this, maybe it's a, um, you know, a meeting with, you know, with both boards. So, if that was the case, on Monday night.
Well, it doesn't have to be a Monday, maybe you just dedicate a different night.
Another night, yeah.
Yeah.
Another night.
I mean, sometimes you just have to.
Is there any, you know what, I mean, you know when we have our other meetings, if you could work with Stacy Buckley and just see if we can get it combined in the next couple of weeks. Now, would we also be able to get, um, uh, through LGC, what are the bills that are out there right now?
It's right on the website, under legislative, and you're having a legislative vote.
Yeah, they put the pieces in, put it in there.
Okay.
One of the things that we might wanna ask our legislators, um, and it happens frequently, is that there are, um, very nondescript, um, bills that really have nothing to do with the town, but then at the last minute, someone throws an amendment in.
Yeah.
Um, and so if, if we could get our legislators, um, agreement that they would at least notify us when something like that pops up, because many times it's fast tracked and you don't have much time to respond.
And I don't know if you saw the latest legislative bulletin, oh, you probably talked about that Friday at the MAC meeting, right?
Yeah.
They, they don't even have to post going into executive session to take a vote on things, so it doesn't, you're not, there's no notice requirement.
Yeah, uh, but one of the things that I did notice, um, and one of the things, thoughts that I had when I was thinking about that was, we had last meeting, and Representative Kirk was, was here, Representative, in a discussion, Representative Kirk, because we asked him about going to the meetings, or, or one of the, it was with the, uh, the revenue, loss of the rooms and meals, and he said they were having that one that was up in Concord, we were talking about possibly going up there, and he suggested that we didn't go up there, and, but he also mentioned about working through the municipal association. What, what I was looking at, the state reps that we have now, the only ones that are really familiar, there are, not all of them are familiar, 'cause several of them are relatively new, and they're not as familiar with what, uh, LGC is, like Representative Kirk and Representative Emmerton, and they, and Pratt, but, uh, we might wanna have also that kind of a discussion too, as how, how we communicate, and that there are things, and that if LGC is advocating for something, that LGC is actually representing our interests, so that, so that they're aware of that.
And I think that the key point is, is that if we do have this meeting, is, we, we need one of them to serve as a key contact point with our board, you know, as to what's.
They're all on different committees, that's a problem.
I understand, but well, like Neil is the, he's on finance, and, and I think he would be the most appropriate one, he has the most knowledge, but, um,
You're gonna have to dedicate one night to this.
Yeah, oh, I agree, but last, I remember we did it a couple, we did it at the library at the high school, and we had everybody, but we needed to be a little bit more focused than, um.
But don't we get the information from the LGC, and they filter it out first? I mean.
Does it, okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
I'll jump on the sword on this one.
Okay.
I'm trying to get a realistic, what, what is going on, not reading off someone's political agenda sheet, whether they be Republican or Democrat or whatever. And I think that's where I'm striving, is like, here is what the bill is, here is what the consequences of the bill, the bill may be, this is how it may impact us in Goffstown, here is how we would like you to consider when you vote.
Right.
I don't know how you did it in Manchester, but, okay, so, but rather than taking this, you know, again, um, sometimes it gets like very overly partisan, and, you know, um, trying to take that out, out of the equation, you know, um.
If I could, one of the questions that was raised today was, as a delegation, um, do you ever get together, the question was supposed, do you ever get together and, um, consider the municipality that you represent to, to form a united front, and as much as that is something that we would like to see, it's very difficult to get every legislate, every legislature to, um, to agree to the same things. So while in theory we'd say we'd like you to vote, you know, since you represent the residents of Goffstown, the voters of Goffstown, it's very difficult to say, we want you all to support this issue, and all to support this issue, because, I mean, you look at just the five of us, you never, you know, they each try to do the thing that, that they feel is, is right, but it's not worth asking that, I mean, it's worth asking that question, but it's difficult to get a, a block.
Right, and, and I think the, you know, the message is sometimes contradictory, I, I read in the paper, oh, the, the leadership in, in the House is not looking to downshift further costs to the municipalities. Then I hear from some of our state reps, oh, we're gonna be downshifting costs, it, what, what's going on, you know, and that's the, I'm just trying to get my.
And maybe if we had the House bills that we can key in on, especially the revenue, um, bills, and the downshifting bills, and key in on those, and ask them, you know.
Is it too late for them, when, when is the deadline for them to submit bills?
Oh, I think the deadline's passed, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, that's another thing too, is that, you know, in the past, we have had a couple of state reps who have come to us and said, are there any bills that, you know, that you feel that are local, or that you want us to pay particular attention to, that may not be addressed by the municipal association or LGC, we haven't really, haven't had that in the last couple of years, so maybe that's another thing to say, hey, keep that line of communication open.
Log open, yep.
Right, and, and, and when, when that deadline, when that's, when that filing period for bills opens up, can you at least clue us in, and, you know, one example is, we talked about, um, the deferrals, um, on manufactured homes, you know, because there is no equity, there's nothing in, in, in the, uh, actual land itself. That's one thing that we chatted about, now, I'm not sure if that has legs anywhere outside of Goffstown, but maybe, maybe it does, and is that something that our.
Actually, I got a call from someone at LGC saying, we hear that you folks are dealing with this well, and we wanna know how you're dealing with it, and I said, well, we're not taking the property, but.
Right.
No, we need a, a better legislative solution.
Right, so.
Yeah, just while we are on that subject, there's, there is one thing that I was made aware of Friday when I had the MAC meeting up there, um, is that apparently the, um, exemption for the utility poll tax, uh, that may wind up coming, I mean, all these years we battled and we, we were able to do that, repeal that exemption, that it looks like they're trying to get it back.
My understanding is it's floating as an unnamed bill right now.
Exactly, exactly, and nobody can pinpoint it.
And so there may be a vote that's not posted.
Right.
Now, why would that be the case, how do you vote if it's not posted, I don't get it, where's the transparency in that one? Don't get that.
So I, I can't answer.
And that's a significant revenue loss.
Yeah, but why would that not be?
And that was, that was another thought that I had when I was thinking about this, 'cause we have some new state reps that don't, could be easily swayed that this is a new tax that was just initiated, when they don't know the history, that it's, that they've had an exemption.
Okay, so we'll work on that, and, um, do we need to designate some time, I think it might be a good, for us to take our positions, so that we, when we have this meeting, we're prepared beforehand, and then it's not.
I'll send you out, yeah, and I'll send you an email in terms of the schedule, and looking at some dates and possibilities, and let me know which one.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so now we'll go to the warrant.
Yes.
And this is a time that we have to now vote on whether or not we, um, recommend or not recommend. Um, so we'll start with, uh, number three, Article three, and I think they've been renumbered, right, Sue, in here?
They, um, have, because six was removed.
Yeah, because, because we took, we took the, uh, police cruiser off.
I just sent this out to Dan today, so he could verify, 'cause I caught these votes on theirs, uh, on the television, I just wanna make sure it was accurate, um.
Oh, I have that too.
Oh, okay.
Just bear with me a second, and I don't know how, tried to keep track of that. All right, we can just keep, I will let you know as, as we go through, as I wrote them down.
Okay, so Article three is the operating budget, and the board needs to take a vote on that, and how much was added back into this, a hun- above the Selectmen's revised budget, a hundred and eighty-six thousand something?
Yeah.
For what purpose?
Uh, road resurfacing.
Road resurfacing, a question that I had, and again, this is, we can, is technically, we have to submit where these MS lines, right where it lines up. One of the members talked about, um, the library, and if you remember, there was a couple of instances in which we took money out of the library budget.
We didn't.
And we put money back.
Yes.
But there, it's still.
It was line by line, they can figure that out, it was all in wages and benefits.
Right, but did it have anything to do with, um, hours of library operation, or reduction in staff there?
No.
That's the library trustees.
What?
We don't.
No, it was, um, the difference between the department head budget and the Selectmen's
Right.
budget was cola and steps.
Uh, there was some more than that, it was, there was, and I don't wanna belabor this too much, but, if we go to, um, let me just get to the page here.
I, I confirm that with Diane.
Retirement, unemployment, workers, benefits.
No, I'm looking at, you know, case in point, um,
Computers.
Computers and, computers and communication equipment, um, member, they had.
We put it back, you put it back in, right?
We did put that back in, I don't think we did.
Well, see, I'm confused with the put it in, we said it was gonna be surplus, we said it was gonna be dollars that we would use to offset other.
Correct.
Other holes.
I understand that, so there are, there are three or four items here which we did not reinstate. From the, and again, we can have this discussion next week, I don't think, I don't think that's going to change anything, but, um, if we even want to have this discussion next week. I was just, um, I was, uh, just simply trying to respect, you know, the opinions of a few that were on the Budget Committee, and it's not a, it's not a major amount of money here, um, that we're talking about, so.
Yeah, question, where do we sit overall, 'cause originally we looked at the budget, the articles, zero tax impact. How has that changed, has it changed to what?
With, with the revised budget, and if every appropriation article passes, the town side of the tax rate would be eight dollars and ninety-one cents, rather than eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
You just said with the revised budget and if all articles pass, it would be.
All appropriation articles.
All appropriation articles.
The tax rate would be eight dollars and ninety-one cents, and the current tax rate is eight ninety-five on the town side.
So, um, the, the, the issue again was, you know, when, when Paul Agros made the motion, he, he did put it in that, that line, there was some, some members who talked about some of these other places where we took money, where we did some redistribution, so again, we can either do that or not do that, there's nothing to be done, you know, this evening, and it's small, it's not, these are not major, this is, we're not shifting fifty thousand dollars around.
And you can always redistribute later anyway.
When we wait till after, after the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, why talk about something that might not be there?
Okay, I'm just trying to, try to stay as true to the lines as possible, but, okay, so Article three, um, we need to, uh, need a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article number three, the operating budget.
Take a motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, the motion has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All those abstaining?
That's five oh oh.
That's five oh oh. Um, the other, I, I know that I've, that we've stated this publicly, but I would also like the board to consider sending a letter or an email to the Budget Committee Chairman, um, I think there was a, a, it was a very difficult process this year, um. I'd like to send the, the Budget Committee Chair an, an email or a letter stating that, um, the board is in concurrence with, um, the articles, there, there, there will be no amendments coming from the Board of Selectmen, and the other thing that I, I wanted to, um.
Appropriation articles.
On appropriation, on appropriation articles, and that the board, um, would not support any amendments, and the reason why I say that, um, higher or lower, because we have, we have concurrence on, and we have a, we have recommendations on, positive recommendations on all of these articles, and I, I, I would wanna send a message to the Budget Committee that that was appreciated, um, it was a long process, but if somebody makes a motion to increase an amount, I don't, I don't think that we should, I think we should oppose that, we, we, this was a total package here, you know, and, and by moving numbers up and down, it defeats the purpose of that, yeah.
Well, in light of that also, I mean, and it seems to me that if we're going to say that what the tax impact is of this, I mean, basically, it's, it's a neutral tax impact on the town side to, uh, support an amendment that would increase one of these articles, we'd be.
I, right.
I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't get up and, and support an increase on one of these articles, and then on the, after I just stated that, if all of these pass.
Right. The reason why I say that is because after this meeting is held, the Budget Committee then goes back, and if any one of them has been amended, they can go and change them.
Right.
And I would.
Should we take action on such a letter after we get through all the recommendations on the warrant articles, to make sure the board supports everything on there?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, um, but I just wanted to get that out in the open, so Article three, we're, we're, we're five oh.
Right.
Um, Article four and Article five are the collective bargaining agreement articles, they cannot be amended at the deliberative session. So Article four is the Patrolman's, um, CBA, it's been recommended by the Budget Committee, uh, eight three one, I have, I have the same number, um, and I need a motion to either recommend or not recommend from the Board of Selectmen.
Motion to accept the Patrolman Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I'll be to recommend.
Recommend, to recommend.
To recommend, okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of recommending the Article four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and all those against?
Hey.
Okay, that's four one. Article number five is the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the dispatchers and clerks at the Police Department, and again, I would need a motion to, uh, recommend or not recommend Article five.
I'll make the motion to recommend Article five on the Collective Bargaining Agreement, dispatchers and clerks.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, not hearing any, all those in favor of recommending Article five, say aye.
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 All those against?
Yeah.
Four one, and that is recommended by the Budget Committee nine two one. Um, Article number six is, uh, shall the town raise and appropriate, appropriate four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for the purpose of reinstating the Budget Committee's cut from the approved CIP road plan, and I, that was, um, recommended by the Budget Committee ten two, and that's what I had as well, is there a motion to recommend Article number six?
I'll recommend it.
Is there a second? Second by Selectmen Fornier, any discussion, not hearing any, all those in favor of recommending Article six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion is unanimous, five zero. Article seven is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a pumper tanker to replace a nineteen ninety-two fire engine and a nineteen eighty-nine tanker, uh, and to fund this appropriation with a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund for a net of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, this was, uh, recommended by the Budget Committee nine to three. Um, is there a motion to recommend Article seven?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor of recommending Article seven, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, five zero. Article number eight is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing an automated solid waste collection vehicle to replace the two thousand solid waste, uh, vehicle, and again, this appropriation is in addition to Article three, the operating budget. The Budget Committee voted to recommend this ten two, is there a motion to recommend Article eight?
Motion to recommend Article Eight on the automated solid waste collection.
Is there? Is there a second? I'll second it. Uh, all those in favor of recommending Article Eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, five, zero. Next is Article Number Nine, to see if the town of, uh, will vote, vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting the nonprofit Goffstown Main Street Program. Uh, Budget Committee voted unanimously, twelve, zero, to support Article Nine, to recommend Article Nine. Is there a motion to recommend Article Nine? Moved by Selectman Devans. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Fornier. Any discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article Nine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? That's five, zero, unanimous. Now we are going to non-moneyed articles. To see if the town will vote. Now, on, on non-moneyed articles, we are not obligated to put a recommendation. It is within the board's purview if we would so choose to, to do that. Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we do not add any notations to non-money articles.
Okay, there's a motion.
All non-money articles or all non-money articles that do not impact the tax rate?
All non-money articles, as per the, the recommendation of LGC or, I mean, everything that I've read, they, they say that you should, should stay away from adding any verbiage to anything other than appropriation articles.
That's what they do for, from your town attorney. Your town attorney thinks that you have the right, and sometimes even the responsibility to take a decision.
Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second. Uh, with that, I will assume that we are going to take a recommend or not recommend position then. Article Ten.
Well, do you want to take it on all or just the ones that affect the tax rate?
I think we're going to go through them one by one.
Okay. All right.
Because if I don't get a motion to recommend or not recommend, then we're, we're going to be silent on it.
Okay.
Seems that would be the logical way of proceeding. Um, Article Ten is to see if the town will vote to adopt an ordinance pursuant to RSA thirty-one, colon, thirty-nine C to allow for the administrative enforcement of violations of any municipal code, ordinance, bylaw, or regulation, and for the collection of penalties to be used prior to the service of a formal summons and complaint. The system provides opportunities for persons who do not wish to contest violations to pay such penalties by mail. The proposed ordinance is available for viewing on the town's website and in the town clerk's office. Is there a motion to recommend or not recommend Article Number Ten? There's a motion to recommend Article Number Ten. Is there a second?
Going once?
Uh, there's a second. Any discussion on Article Ten? I know we've talked about this before, but is there anything anybody wants to state on the record? Okay, um, there is a motion on the table to recommend Article Number Ten. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those against?
Nay.
And all those abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, that will be three, one, one. Article Number Eleven, to see if the town will vote to adopt the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive outlined in Chapter Seventy-nine E of State Law and to designate two commercial areas of town as eligible for said incentive. One, Pinardville area, which includes one hundred and forty-seven taxable properties, and two, Goffstown Village area, which includes one hundred taxable parcels. A map identifying these parcels is available on the town's website and in the town clerk's office. This plan has been endorsed by Goffstown Board of Selectmen, Goffstown Economic Development Council, and Goffstown Main Street Program to promote improvements and investments in said commercial districts. Is there a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article Number Eleven?
Recommend.
There's a motion to recommend. Is there a second?
Yes.
There was a second. Any discussion on Article Eleven? All those in favor of recommending Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All those abstaining?
Abstain.
That'll be four, zero, one. Article Number Twelve, to see if the town will vote to adopt the Town Manager Form of Government as outlined in Chapter Seven of State Law. Further information on the Town Manager Form of Government is available at the town clerk's office and on the town's website. Is there a motion, excuse me, to either recommend or not recommend Article Number Twelve?
Motion to not recommend.
There is a motion to not recommend Article Number Twelve. Is there a second? Is there a second not to recommend?
I'll second that for discussion.
Second for discussion. All right.
Reason why I made a motion not to recommend it, because I think that this, we're putting the cart before the horse. Uh, this article has been placed on the warrant with no significant discussion or, uh, compilation of the expectations of what we expect from the Town Manager Form of Government, what citizens can expect, what other committees and volunteer groups, uh, can expect, how their, uh, in, interaction with the Town Manager is. For example, uh, we have a planner that works with the, uh, planning board. If we were selecting, we went, we just went through a selection process for a planner, how would that process be handled? How was the interaction between the planning board, uh, and the Town Manager in the, um, uh, search for a planner, uh, or any other person with that? How do we, I mean, a statement was made that if it's not, uh, that it's going to be, um, more effective, more efficient. Uh, we haven't identified any of those items, and we have, uh, a statement was made that if it doesn't work, we can always repeal it. Uh, and there's been no discussion as to how we're going to measure, uh, whether it's working or whether it's not working, what our expectations are. I mean, this is a major change, uh, it's a, uh, in the form of government. When I mentioned this, uh, article to other people, the first thing was, well, we tried that once before and, and we, we didn't want it. So, to me, we should have some type of a discussion, uh, with what we expect. Uh, we should have, uh, perhaps, I mean, I, I have nothing against the Town Manager Form of Government. I know many town administrator, uh, managers that went from town, uh, a town administrator, uh, before, uh, current town administrator. We, you know, we've gone through those searches. I've seen the town administrator from Hoppington apply for a, a position here who did not get it and wound up going to another town, uh, where he was a town manager for many, many years. And there are, I do know several town managers that do work for, uh, for, uh, Board of Five Selections, Five Selectmen, and it would seem to me that what would be appropriate is that we have a discussion with perhaps some former selectmen, to find out what the, what, what to look for, what, what, what is the expectation, and perhaps even have a discussion with, uh, a one or two town managers that do work for a Board of Selectmen.
Okay, anyone else like to be heard?
I, I would find that the, put, list this article on the warrant as submitted by the Board of Selectmen, followed by the caveat, not recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Very unusual, and, uh, therefore, I would vote not to accept the motions that's on the table. I would prefer there be no recommendation on this one when it, all the votes are settled.
Anyone else want to be heard?
No. I was hoping to speak to this in the affirmative and not looking at it as a, as a negative. Um, I do support this article. And I, I think there's been, I think when one looks at our form of government and decides of our town, it is time for that change. I think when you look at how our departments are set up and the silo effect that takes place, and we do talk about efficiencies, and we talk about how we would look at the performance of those departments, there has to be a central folk, focus and essential point where those, where those processes go through. We don't have that in our form of government right now. We have a board that is a part-time board. Um, it doesn't, this, this, this article does not take away that board, but it leaves them to, to spend the time on what I think are the, are the business at hand that, that, uh, when you look at the amount of time that one has with these meetings, that the Town Manager would handle those types of situations, such as looking at evaluations, as far as looking at how those departments will work together, what, what processes are overlapping, et cetera. And I think that's where this, that's, and that's what a Town Manager speaks to. And I understand that a lot of times people, they're afraid of the unknown, and there's, and, and I don't think it's an unknown here. There's too many towns in our size. I think there's ten towns our size, only two don't have a Town Manager Form of Government, so it's not an unknown entity. In fact, it's an entity of towns of our size need to go to. So I do support this article, and I would, and, and that, obviously, for your, in this case, where you're voting not to, not to go forward because you, because of certain details that you want to look and study. It seems to be sometimes in this board, we like to study things to their debt. You know, I think there's sometimes, we, we look at how things move within our government, and I think that's one, one of the, one of the big issues, I think, when I came here, was running for selectmen, you look at how slow things move, and I can, and these processes that take five years or two years or a decade, it, it, I don't think it serves the community well, doesn't serve the people well, and doesn't serve our form of government well. So, uh, with that in mind, I still would like to support this article.
Next.
I'll just start by saying, I, I don't believe that we should, and it's my opinion, that we should be recommending or not recommending, um, non-appropriation articles. But that aside, Articles Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, I agree with Selectman Pierce. It's kind of ludicrous for us to be voting whether to recommend or not recommend, since we are the ones who put it on the board, on the, on the ballot. So are we saying to the voters, not only did we submit it, but we really recommend it, or we submitted it, but we don't recommend it? I think it's ludicrous, and, and I'm abstaining from these votes because I don't believe our opinions, um, other than that we put it on the ballot or it was submitted by a petition.
Okay, um, I guess I'll, I'll weigh in. Um, I do think it, it's a good idea for us to weigh in. That's what we were elected to do, is to offer our opinion, so I guess I would concur with our Town Attorney, who also sees it, uh, in that respect. The other thing on, by providing our recommend or not recommend, um, in some of these, um, it may be a three, two. And if you just put submitted by the Board of Selectmen, if you're in the minority, it just says submitted by the Board of Selectmen. If it's recommended three, two, and then when someone goes to the polls, it casts a little bit of doubt in their minds, saying, hmm, that wasn't unanimous, that was the only three, two. So, I, I guess, in, in deference to those who may be in the minority, at least, that, that sheds a lot of light on that, to say, hey, you know what? This was a four, one vote, it was a three, two vote. So, that would be the only, that would be the silver lining, I guess, and, um, you know, in putting a recommendation or a not recommendation. So, so that being the case, um, where we sit now, we have a motion on the, on the table. It's been, um, to not recommend Article Twelve. It's been motioned and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Not hearing any.
Just have a, a comment on that. I, I agree that, uh, having not recommend on there is, is kind of confusing, okay? I mean, part of the reason why I made the motion is I don't know whether or not it's going to pass or not, but I made the motion to generate, uh, the discussion on it, uh, what my position was like. Again, I have nothing against the Town Manager Form of Government. Uh, I think, um, that if this, well, I, I just, again, my, my main concern is that we're putting the cart before the horse, and that we have not had this discussion with the department heads, what expectations are, uh, with other boards and committees, what expectations are, and we have nothing to give the citizens as to what to, what they can expect as a difference of what we have now. And one other thing, though, that I would point out, is you talk about that this is a part-time board, and, uh, Town Manager would be better than what we have right now. Well, I'd just like to let the board know that the town administrator has all the authority that the Board of Selectmen gives the town administrator. So if there's anything that you would like to see a little bit more done and do less, all the board has to do is vote to give that authority to the town administrator. And you know what? You can always take it back.
Anyone else like to be heard? All right, we'll, we'll hold the vote. Um, all those in favor of not recommending Article Twelve, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
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 Abstain.
And abstentions?
Abstain.
So it's one, two, two. Okay, um, now with respect to Article Twelve, is there any other motions?
Like to make a motion to support Article Twelve?
Uh, you have a motion on the table to recommend Article Twelve. Is there a second? I'm going to second it. Is there a need for any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor of recommending Article Twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
And all abstaining?
Abstain.
One. The motion, uh, does not pass. So, in that respect, it will just say submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Now, I will come back to Twelve, because we're going to need some direction at the deliberative session. All right. Article Thirteen. To see if the town, this is a petition article, to see if the town will vote to adopt an exemption for the disabled under the provisions of RSA seventy-two, colon, thirty-seven be as follows. The exemption from assessed value for qualified taxpayers shall be eighty thousand dollars off their assessment. To qualify, the person shall, must apply in writing to the Selectmen no later than April fifteenth of the tax year. Be eligible under Title Two or Title sixteen of the Federal Social Security Act. Must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, must occupy the property as his principal place of abode as of April first of the tax year, must own property individually or jointly, or if owned by a spouse, must have been married for at least five years. We haven't, that's that one. Had in the calendar year preceding April first, a net income from all sources of not more than forty thousand dollars if single, sixty thousand if married, own assets not in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, excluding the value of the person's actual residence, and up to the minimum single-family residential lot size specified in the local zoning ordinance. Is there a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article Thirteen? I will jump on the sword. I will make a recommend, I will make a motion to not recommend Article Thirteen. I'll second. All right, I'll speak to mine, my motion. Um, I think this is one where precisely the, um, voters need, you know, need our opinion, and I think, this could have revenue ramifications for the community, which are unknown at this point. And we have had no dialogue with the petitioner as to what those ramifications may be. Certainly, there would be exemptions that may be provided to, uh, disabled persons in, in, in Goffstown if this were adopted, which would then be redistributed to all of the taxpayers. We don't have any really, uh, numbers as to what, what that redistribution may look like, and therefore, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it at this point. That's my, my position. Anyone, Steve, you want to speak to your second?
I'll speak to my second. I think as we went forward with this year's, last year's budget, and even this year's budget, and we look at vehicles at a half a million dollars, and right now, I think our exemptions, are they close to eight hundred thousand dollars a year? Between veterans and elderly and.
Oh, between the two, elderly and.
Easily.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I think whenever you look at an exemption, I think on its own merit, you can look at it, and you can understand it, and it has value and it has merit, but we're now coming into a times where where, 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 when we look at operations, and we look at capital expenses, and we're just not being able to meet those needs. And you start looking at, you know, the, the revenues of eight hundred thousand that we, that we are foregoing, it, that there has to be a point where you have to look at and say, we can no longer afford that. That's why I'll support the, the motion.
Anyone else like to be heard on Article Thirteen? Not hearing anyone. Um, we'll, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of not recommending Article Thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those say nay?
Abstain.
And one abstention, that'll be four, one, four, zero, one, not recommend. Uh, Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to establish a police detail revolving fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five H. The money received from charges for services shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same upon the order of the Board of Selectmen. These funds may be expended only for police detail-related expenses, and no expenditure shall be made in such a way as to require the expenditure of other town funds which have not been appropriated for that purpose. Is there a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article Fourteen?
Clarification, this was submitted by petition.
By petition.
Because we also. Because we also considered putting in an article.
We decided against it. Anyone?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I, when we were discussing this, didn't we have some questions, and I don't know if we ever got the answers, as to, was it, it was dealing with the finance software that we had?
Correct.
And I thought the question that we had was, what was it that could not be done, that needed to be done? And I don't know if we ever got that answer, I don't recall.
I, Mr. Chair, I, I came away from all that discussion is that it would be inefficient for us to implement this. And we would be putting, you know, a burden on our existing finance staff. And therefore, would not be appropriate to do, I, I'm in favor of the intent, but not at this time.
Good idea, wrong time, I think is what.
That's what we've come down to.
That was my understanding, and, and again, I don't, I, I think in light of that, you know, if no one else wants to make the motion to not recommend, then I will do it. Because we, we had that discussion, that it was just not prudent at this point to proceed with Article fourteen, based upon our accounting software, and that, that we, we probably believe in the principle of this fund, but just not this year. That we were looking at investigating accounting software next year, could we, could that be a, a module or something in that software that would allow us to do it more efficiently? So it's not, it's not stating that a police revolving fund is a bad idea, it's just saying that this is not the appropriate year in which to implement it. So I'll, I'll make that motion to not recommend, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Or you wanna speak to your second, or?
I think we've already spoken.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, we have a motion to not recommend Article fourteen, and it's been seconded. Um, all those in favor of not recommending Article fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And against, and abstain.
Abstain.
Four zero one. Article fifteen, this is another petition article, to see if the town will vote to amend and add to the town's noise ordinance the following paragraph L, under Roman numeral three, specific violations enumerated. L, excessive slash noise, nuisance noise in a residential area within five hundred feet of property line. If a complaint is made to the Goffstown Police Department by a resident to stop nuisance noise and/or excessive sound from, but not limited to, the use of any ATV, dirt bike, motorized vehicle, four-by-four, off-road vehicle, modified car slash truck, or machinery, et cetera, or any other nuisance noise on any lot or parcel of land in a residential area within five hundred feet of complainant's property line, it shall be considered unlawful and a nuisance, period. At the responding officer's discretion, a verbal warning, written warning, or a violation may be issued. Violations will be treated in accordance with Section four penalties. A complainant may request to remain anonymous if the request is for a verbal warning. In addition, the Goffstown Police Department can request, comma, if they deem it necessary, comma, a cease and desist order from the Board of Selectmen in a Board of Selectmen meeting if the nuisance noise and/or violation continues. The current noise ordinance is available at the town clerk's office or on the town's website. Is there a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article fifteen?
You left out one thing, submitted by petition.
Submitted by petition, all right. I did say that earlier. Is there a motion to either recommend or not recommend Article fifteen?
Motion to not recommend.
Okay, um, it is a motion to not recommend, is there a second? Is there a second?
I think Phil's gesturing.
Would you like to second that?
No.
I'll second.
Selectman Fornier seconds that, any discussion?
There are, there's portion of this words that I agree with, and there's other portions that I doubt are, we have the ability or the lawful ability to implement, and for that reason, as, in total, the article is not well-written and couldn't be properly implemented. So at this point, I would prefer it not to be in ordinance. I assume that if at the deliberate obsession, uh, it's changed, uh, I assume at that time, we would revote.
I, I, and again, that comes down to, I know the RSAs allow us to change our recommendation if an appropriation article is amended up or down, but I don't know what the RSA states as far as, because there's nothing.
Any amended article?
Anything that's amended, right? Any amended article?
I thought so, I'd have to look it up.
The recommendations are only in the Budget Section, RSA thirty-two. There is no other, notation that allows us to put anything on a warrant article, here, you know, it's, it is a, interpretation by an attorney, but the, I mean, LGC takes the position that the RSAs are silent on it, therefore, we don't have the right to put anything on other articles, but it specifically addresses changing an article's recommendation upon.
And that's because the, um.
An amendment.
Right, and that's because the reason for the recommendation is a ten percent rule.
Exactly. So again, I'm gonna go back to, I don't think we should be putting recommendations on articles that are not appropriation articles.
Your, your point is we ought to be silent on this.
That has been my position, yes.
I'm, um, okay, any other discussion?
Do you want to?
No. Okay, so there is a motion that is on, on the table to not recommend Article fifteen, that motion's been made and seconded. Last but not, then last chance for a discussion, not hearing any. All those in favor of not recommending Article fifteen as drafted, say aye.
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 All those against? And all those abstaining?
Abstaining.
Phil, where were you on that one?
I voted aye.
You're an aye, so that would be not recommend, four zero one. And sixteen and seventeen do not require a, any, any action.
And before you leave tonight, I'll have the, the last page for you to sign.
Okay.
Six copies.
So, what we can do now, we can, with your permission, since this, we don't, we have a relatively light agenda, do we wanna put, you know, who will speak to the different articles? Since I was the Budget Committee rep, I, is there any objection if I did three, Article three? Which is the, which is the operating budget? Or does someone else like to do it? Doesn't matter, but I just figured I'd, usually the person does the budget, does it.
Hearing no dissent.
I'm not hearing any dissent. Article numbers four is the contract for the patrolman, and I would assume Selectman DeVanzo would, and I would assume you would do five as well, or not?
I don't like going, same person.
The issue is, is that you were the one who knows these contracts, that's, you know, the best. So, um, if you don't wanna do it, we can.
Well, I mean, if you want me to do it, I'll do it, but I just.
I think he said yes. I think he said yes, I think he said yes.
That was my.
I, I, I heard him say it.
I heard him say it.
Uh, Article six is the road program. Anyone?
Mr. Pierce said yes on that one, I think.
Thank you.
I agree.
Article seven.
I'll do that one.
Nick?
Can I speak to the dump truck one? Oh, well, that's not on.
No, I'm not doing that one. Uh, there's a garbage truck one.
Too serious.
Okay, I'm just trying to move ahead here. Recycling, uh, solid waste vehicle?
Yeah, solid waste vehicle.
What?
Selectman Pierce?
Solid waste.
All right. Main Street? Selectman Fornier?
I thought I was gonna get a pass on these.
Nope. Article ten. Anyone? Good, Phil, he's like, oh, no. I'll do it. Uh, Article eleven, Selectman Fornier.
I wanna speak about that a little bit. I thought, no, all kidding aside, I thought Derek did an excellent job, is this something that would not be, would admissible or not? I mean, maybe.
On the route.
In other words.
I think EDC is doing a GTV show on it.
But, I mean, saying his presentation that he had with the PowerPoint, for me to recap what he does, what he.
Oh, would you like us to have that?
We actually did that with the Tiff district.
I mean, I would think, I mean, he, he's, I mean, for me to speak, you know, when, when someone knows it inside out, would not make, would not be a benefit to the town. All right?
So we would just need.
I mean, if he's open to it, I'm.
Yeah, and we just need the permission of, um, we need the permission of the moderator for a non-resident to speak.
Right. You have to get, you have to get that permission from, from, uh, Moderator Stark.
No, he won't be here, it will be, uh.
Moderator Platt?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, I, oh, that's good, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Take care of it. Okay, Article twelve.
Phil?
Phil?
Won't want me to do it. Unless you want me to repeat what I said tonight. Scott, I don't think there's anybody better than, than you to present that one.
Great, I'll do it.
All right.
Twelve, yes.
What's this?
Thirteen.
Our whole petition.
Yeah, we don't, they speak on their, on their own. Now.
Thirteen, I just wanna point out to the board, the, um,
Nick.
issue that the assessor has brought up regarding that petition article. Typically, when towns do a disability exemption, now I know this is going on, not recommended, but typically, it's the same income standards as your elderly, and this one isn't, and I think we have to point that out to the public. And also, the amount of the assessment is higher than the amount of the, uh, the exemption for the elderly. So in the, for example, the, that eighty thousand, if you were sixty-five years old, you'd only get a forty-five thousand dollar exemption, not an eighty thousand exemption. And when you turn sixty-five, you go on the elderly, so the disability one's up to sixty-five, and then you go on the elderly, so they'd be having this eighty thousand exemption, and then it would drop to forty-five.
Yarumba, um, so you're asking for the board to amend the petition article and then not recommend it?
No, I'm just asking for, that that become public information somehow, that.
On the voter's guide?
Yeah, maybe the voter's guide is a good way.
This is factual.
Right.
Just put the current, the other exemptions that we currently have and their values.
Right, and I don't think many people know that if you're on the disability exemption in a town, and then you turn sixty-five, you go to.
The elderly.
The elderly, and most towns do it so that the disability exemption is the same as a sixty-five-year-old, so that they don't get one of these.
Where.
Or an increase in taxes, you know?
Where, but this article doesn't say it expires because you're sixty-five.
Right, it doesn't. That, that's just the law.
But, but. Oh, it's something, it's.
It's in the law, you, you can, a disability exemption is available to you before the age of sixty-five, after sixty-five, you go on the elderly exemption. And that's why most towns keep the income standards and the asset standards and the amount of the exemption the same, uh, between two programs.
Okay.
But we can explain that if it doesn't get amended at the deliberative session by someone, um, we can explain that in the voter's guide.
All right, I just, if, if I may, I, I just wanna have a philosophical chat about some of these, especially Article twelve. I, I just want there, I want there to be, everyone to know upfront what we should be doing as a board or as individuals who don't believe in something. And I know we have this, we've had this discussion in the years prior. In the past, we have had a practice where the majority of the board, and there was someone who spoke on, you know, so in this, and there was an article that was voted four-one or three-two, the person would advocate for the board's position, no matter what that vote was. We have had situations in the past where the minority vote also stepped away from the table, went into the audience and stated their, their case. And no matter which way we go, um, we just, we should establish what that is now, and not, no one should be surprised if some, by someone just stepping out into the audience and making the, and I don't have, I don't have, and again, Article twelve may be that, that one where there needs to be some debate. I'm not, I'm not objecting to it, I just want that to be known, you know, upfront. So the minority, whether it was a four-one or a three-two, um, how do we want to, you know, proceed? What is everyone's opinion on that?
I, uh, I'll speak up on that, Scott. I'm, I would prefer if you write the voter's guide and put a lot of detail in that, and then not be necessary to promote it at the deliberative session. Just moderate or introduce the article and let it go, that's my.
You're supposed to speak to the article, though, that's the, that's the.
And I think the voter's guide has to be factual, we cannot advocate for or against.
And that's.
Well, especially in twelve.
In anything, I don't, I don't think we're.
Oh, right, no, I understand that, I guess.
And that can be done, just factually pointing out the pros and cons of different forms and the authorities that would be put in place or how they differ.
Right, I just don't, I mean, fine, I'm, I am the one who's gonna speak to Article twelve, and if I get questions, you know my position on it, I'm gonna advocate, you know, my speech is probably gonna advocate for it. That being said, I wanna respect, you know, those who disagree, and either allow them time to have that, have their point heard, or not. But I just, I think that's something that we should discuss now, and, you know, it's difficult, when you're in that setting and people are firing questions at you, it's really, it's not always easy to say, well, what is the board, what's the board's position on this one, or whatever, and I can say, well, we, we didn't come to a position because it was a two-two, you know?
It was a three-two vote, you put it on the ballot.
Right, right, right.
And so.
Well, what, what's, what's the, what's the downside to it? And then all of a sudden, if you're not prepared to speak to it, then you're like, um, I, I wasn't, and that's, and that's really where I was kinda going, do we?
Well, is there a way to work through Selectman DeVanzo's issues at the next meeting? And address the things that he brought up tonight? Next Monday.
And the second part of that would be, do you take that one article by itself and have pros and cons?
No, I know that, it's gonna be any one of these.
It's gonna be any one of these articles, you're gonna talk, Articles four and five, I mean, you could be up there technically,
Right.
Technically, Phil, and that, that someone can speak to disagreeing with, why it's supportive of the article.
Right. Yes, Nick?
Well, I was just gonna go to your first basic question, about our, at the deliberative and our positions, and I, I think the First Amendment gives everyone the right of free speech.
Of course.
But I think anyone who stands in front of the podium in an official capacity has to present the board's view. So I don't think it's appropriate for someone to get up and say, at the podium, well, I don't agree with this position. I guess any resident could get up and say, Selectman so-and-so, I noticed you voted this, could you please explain? But I think if any of us want to express our own personal opinion, the proper venue would be for us to go down into, I, I would prefer that they didn't do that, but if someone felt compelled to exercise their First Amendment right, they should do it as a resident, and get in line and present it as their own personal opinion. But I don't think the podium is the, the venue to do that.
Right. Steve?
Yeah, you know, when you, when we talk about, you know, the exercising, you know, the right to express your opinion, I think as, when you, when you get into boards, be it this board or Budget Committee or any of them, this was the time to exercise your opinion and to convey to others your, your thoughts. And after that, um, for me personally, when you, when, after that, when you go forward, in the case of, let's say, of any article that, that we vote, that as a group we support, but someone might not be, you know, also if you're in the minority and not supporting that article, that's, that's the point where you're, the time has passed as far as having that discussion on the article and having that debate. That debate ended when we took the vote. Now, and as a board, it passed, and as a board, we should support it.
Anyone else wanna be heard? All right. So what I'm hearing, um, is, well, there's a couple of different ones. That whoever is speaking will, will speak on behalf of the board. That whoever is speaking will, will speak on behalf of the board and the board's position if there, if one was taken. If someone is asked why they, if the Selectman, why they voted in the minority, then that person would then be able to articulate their position, or no?
Well, there's no recommendation on this one, right?
I mean, I'm not talking about that one. I'm talking about any, any, any of these for that matter, if you're in the minority. I just wanna, this, this comes up, seems like every other year, and it's, and sometimes the emotions get high. It's like, I can't believe that you did this, X, Y, or Z, and I just want to try to nip that.
Can I say something to that? And, and the reason I say that is because as a board, we vote on things and, and we have differences, and we try, and, and we try, we put out arguments in trying to sway others to, not the, you know, to, to, to your point of view. But when it comes time to that, as a board, after it's voted, and you go out there, there's always that expectation of, well, I went to, you know, in other words, how, how would you have gone forward and promoted if you knew that someone else was going to come out and say other conversations? In other words, you're not in preparation for that piece. And you're not expecting that piece. Should you have gone, and, and last year, we talked about, do, do you lobby it in the paper? Do you lobby it in, in conversations about town? I, I mean, it, it, it brings in a lot, there's a lot of different facets than just speaking at that town meeting. You follow what I'm saying? There's a lot of different facets that are out there.
Okay.
And that you're, you got you in the mouth.
I, I don't think this is any different than any other article. Um, when, when a vehicle is presented, there's going to be people who get up. There may be people who get up and say, I don't think it's the right amount of money, or I don't think we should be doing that. And you present your reasons why you're recommending it. So, I, I think that article is no different. You may have individuals stand up and say, I don't think we should be doing that. They may articulate the very same things that Selectman De Vanzo articulate, but I think it's just whoever is speaking to that article, their place to emphasize why we felt it was an appropriate article. No different than anything, any of the others.
Alright. Is there, okay, I'll ask this, I'll rephrase it. Is there anything that anyone in the minority on these recommends or not recommends feels compassionate enough that they would like to state their case otherwise? And I don't know if I voted in the minority anything. I don't have any twelve? Twelve. Um-
Twelve, there's no recommendation.
There's no recommendation.
So, there is no minority or majority?
Right, right. But do, is that, I mean, we can set the ground rules right now, or, you know, we can, I can state the cause for, and you can state the cause against. I don't have a problem with that.
I'll make it easy. I'm gonna talk about Article seven, and I don't plan on getting up to talk about any of the, any other articles.
But there shouldn't be surprises, is what, there shouldn't be surprise, that's my point.
That's all I'm saying. There shouldn't be a surprise, you know?
And it leaves for surprises when you just leave it open here.
Right.
So, what do you do when a resident gets up and says, there's only one article on here that has no recommendation. Can you tell me why?
Correct. Right. Yeah. Because the boards, the board, it was a two-two-one vote, whether or not to recommend it, and therefore, that motion did not pass.
To place a recommendation.
To place a recommendation.
Right.
Yeah. That would be my answer.
Okay.
So, um, but like I said, I just don't want there to be any, I mean, not that I'm gonna, you know, I would prepare for the great debate of two thousand and eleven with Selectman De Vanzo, but I, but if that's how, if that's how we want to, how we want to proceed, I would accept the challenge. No, I'm only kidding. Now, how do you, how do you feel passionate that you want to speak against it?
I think I made my case.
Okay, alright.
You know, I made my case, and, and, and I have to tell you, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, putting an article on the warrant like that, without doing any preparation, without having a discussion with the Select, with the department heads, other boards, or other committees, just has the impression of top-down management, which does not. It offends people, it doesn't work. Instead of getting together with everybody and getting everybody on board, because if somebody gets up at deliberative session and says, well, what about the department heads? How do they feel about this? I mean, what's the board gonna say? Well, we didn't have the discussion with the department, you guys didn't have the discussion with the department heads? And you're recommending this? I don't want to be in that position. You guys are.
Alright.
That's why I didn't want it on the ballot, on the warrant.
So, we need to have a discussion with the department heads next week.
I mean, I'll make a motion to withdraw it from the, from the warrant.
I'll second that.
There's a, a motion to withdraw it from the warrant. Um, that has been motioned and seconded, and I'll, you can speak to your motion if you wish.
I, I, only thing I'll say to it is, I don't have a problem with this. If we went forward and had the discussion with the department heads, everybody understands what the expectations are, what the department heads would expect from the town manager, what we expect, and other boards and committees, and so that we could prepare a list of what citizens would expect, what we anticipate the pros are gonna be for this, how we're gonna measure those pros, and you know, say what, after three years, we'll take a look, we'll examine it, and if it doesn't meet this, then we'll put a, we'll put an article in there to remove it. As I said, we can give the town administrator all the authority we want to give her. That's up to us. We just vote as a board, give it to the town administrator. And one thing I'll say a little further, I bit my tongue before, but this is the time for me to say it, okay? I have been on the boards, this is my third town administrator working with, okay? Our current town administrator has been here for a while. We all know her, we all work with her. If this were to pass, and this town administrator and this Board of Selectmen decided that she would be the town, town manager, her sitting in here with us transitioning into a town manager, we're probably all fine and dandy for everybody on board, because we've all worked together. She understands our expectations, we know her. But what's gonna happen, at some point, she won't be here. Then the current board is gonna go out and look for another town, town manager. You're gonna get a town manager that may have been a town manager and knows what the statute says. He's gonna come here, and he or she is gonna have the expectation that they're a town manager. The state statute gives, the statute gives me, sets up this relationship between the board and me, and that's what it's gonna be. And I'll tell you, you get town managers, 'cause the Board of Selectmen changes, and all of a sudden, the town manager is gone. They change.
Is that a sign? Are you, would you yield your time to the-
I'm done.
Okay. You want to talk to your second?
Well, I, I'll just go back to the original reason why I had voted not to place it on the, the warrant in the beginning, is I don't think we've done our due diligence. I think we've put the article out there, but we really don't know, or haven't planned for everything that needs to be done prior to getting to that point. We put the cart before the horse.
Alright. Anyone else that's to be heard? Alright. There is a motion to remove Article twelve from the ballot, which has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, nay. Where are you?
You can abstain if you want.
Yeah, yeah, that's up to you.
It'll be someplace still.
It's gotta be somewhere, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
No pressure.
Important pressure. I, I, um, the motion again was to-
To remove it entirely, yeah.
Entirely. I'm gonna go with the good arguments that were just made five minutes ago, and yay to remove it.
Okay. That motion then passes. Article twelve is removed from the ballot.
Okay.
Means I don't have to speak to it.
Do we renumber, Sue?
Yes, we do.
Alright, and I believe that would be it. For the warrant. Um, let's go into any, we voted on the acceptance of Blackbriar, open space. Committee reports, budget committee, kind of explain that. Um, the library, I went to the meeting, oh, they didn't have a quorum. That was what the deal was there. Parks and Rec, you didn't have a quorum either, right?
No, but we did have a good time playing in the snow.
Okay. So, we're done with the committee reports. Is there any, is there any old business that'd like to be brought up?
I did attend the MAC meeting, as I mentioned earlier, and there is, uh, some legislation coming out. One of the things, I think there might be a press conference coming up this Thursday regarding, um, some of the, uh, issues that we've been very concerned about dealing with the retirement. So, um, I believe Thursday, we might know some more about it. Did go over a few other things, and there was a presentation about, and I don't know if Nick is aware of it, the Northern Pass. You've heard about the Northern Pass?
That utility line?
Yeah, the utility line. Um, I got, there was a presentation on that. Coming down, there are some alternate routes. I have all the maps of the, uh, three maps of the alternate routes. What I'll do is I'll leave those for the town administrator, in case anybody wants to see it. With that, apparently, it comes down, gonna go into Franklin. Um, Franklin is very supportive of the project. My understanding is that it's, uh, gonna be ending in Deerfield. One of the questions that I raised on it, was there any intent? My understanding is that there's no cost. Uh, the cost for the transmissions is all being by, it's a Hydro Quebec? Uh, that they'll be paying for it. And when I hear that, uh, one of the things that comes to my mind is, if I were Hydro Quebec, I wouldn't mind paying for it to get something through to a point, and then later on, with the intent that that might expand further down. So, my specific question was, were there any, uh, plans for this to continue, let's say, down into Connecticut, or down into lower part of New York, Westchester County, where, where some of them comes in? And I was told no, uh, but that doesn't mean that that might be an ulterior, uh, you know, reason for it. But the project is there, um, and I'll leave the information, the package, with the maps.
Anything else? Any other?
Uh, last week, the board asked me to, uh, uh, look at a covered bridge in the ti, uh, city of Dover that's, uh, well, for sale, perhaps for a dollar. And, um, to examine if there's any feasibility where that covered bridge would be suitable for, uh, where the former covered bridge was here in the village crossing Scottiquag River. I, I'm about ninety percent comfortable that the answer is yes, but I would like to, uh, uh, put my ideas down into several drawings to present to the board, so I can talk with you easier about the feasibility of this bridge, and, uh, do that at a later board, not, not tonight. 'Cause I, I just, I looked at the bridge today and measured it, and last week, I measured, uh, the existing granite abutments. And, uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable that it's like a ninety percent fit, but I, I want to present the fine details to you as to whether we really want to move forward with it. You know, money can fix anything, but do we, do we want to, I need to express to you what aspects of this would cost money.
Just one question. Uh, my understanding is the bridge has already been removed?
Oh, ye- yes. It has been removed from its, uh, river.
It's in three sections?
It's, uh, still bolted together, and it's sitting on blocks, uh, at a, uh, town yard.
That's a hundred, how many feet long is it?
Hundred and fifty-four.
Hundred and fifty-four feet long.
And it's in that one piece, ah?
No, it's three sections.
Three sections.
It's all still bolted together, lifted it in one section somehow, um, and, uh, placed it on a, a block in a yard, uh, near the river, and its former site. And, uh, it, uh, you know, fifty bolts will, fifty, twenty, twenty, of twen, you know, so, something like one hundred bolts, one-inch diameter bolts, and the sections will break apart. Uh, so, but I, there's, there's complications in the whole design, but, uh, basically, it would fit. And I'd like to explain to you with some drawings how it possibly could work, and then at that time, we'll discuss whether it's worthwhile to move forward. I, I, you know, everything I present right now is, would be perhaps confusing if I don't have a couple of drawings.
Uh, I, I think one of the things that we've always looked at is the rail trail and as, how, how it just dead-ends where it is. So, logistics aside, and obviously, financing aside, if, if it was possible to bring a structure like that-
And, and I'm, I'm biased, I'm biased towards that point. I would, uh, I'm trying to make it work.
Yeah.
And I want to be able to make a convincing argument.
For the rail trail.
I know what Steve's thinking. Can you replace the one over the bridge?
No, I'm thinking we should put some committees together, some department heads together.
Make it stretch out for five years.
And research this and stretch it out for five years. That's what I think we should do. I think we should have our town engineer involved, the DPW, Rails and Trail Committee, and Park and Rec, and we'll get all together and get a collaborative thing and sing kumbaya. That's just my vote today.
I, I just got an email from Bill Dresser and his opinion on the warrant.
Yeah.
I think we, we should go through it. So, if you want to open your, I'll read you his comments on each one.
Was he watching our meeting?
I told him I needed it before six.
We did adjourn quickly, quickly.
Um, Article three, the operating budget, no comment, appears fine. Article-
Hold on.
Four C.
Yep.
Okay. So, Article fours, four and five, uh, he mentions that some towns have added language to collective bargaining agreement articles, advising of the impact of the Evergreen statute on the theory that the impact of that statute does affect cost items, and therefore, should be disclosed. The note, which is not required by any statute, which we have used with other towns, is set forth here if you would want to consider it, and reflects the fact the law might change. Note, pursuant to the, to the form of RSA two seventy-three A twelve, in place at the time of the drafting of this warrant, this collective bargaining agreement, if approved, including the pay plan, but excluding cost of living increases, will continue in full force and effect, uh, until a new agreement is executed.
It doesn't.
So, we have a, a language in that?
We have that, we have language in there, but it doesn't.
Well, we have, um, that language that if it's repealed at the state, it doesn't apply to this or any successor agreements. Also, we have the fact that it is just, um, cost of living they're getting in the last year.
Right.
So, this clarifies that the cost of living is, in that statute, is not, the Evergreen doesn't apply to cost of living.
Could you clarify, 'cause that language seems backwards. Because the language in the, in the contract states that if the Evergreen clause gets repealed, that it's, this contract will not continue, or the terms. So, isn't that the opposite of, so if it-
No.
Is it repealed? It is Evergreen?
The financial will not continue.
Right.
I forgot the exact wording. It says if it's repealed. Uh, we had, um, Attorney Fitzgerald look at that language. If it's repealed, um, then it, it won't apply, 'cause I don't know, if it's repealed, I don't know what the language is gonna be. I don't know if it says as of this date, and if it's after our, we vote that in, then it will apply. So, we wanted to make sure that no matter when the state legislature takes their vote on the Evergreen clause, that it's not gonna apply to this contract.
Yeah, but I, I understand what the intent was, but when I read that, it was kind of like a, a double negative, in that if it's not repealed, then it does apply to it.
And it doesn't apply anyway, 'cause it's just cost of living in the last year.
There's no steps.
Yes. Uh, my, my first take on everything you've just said, Sue, it makes it too complicated for-
To add this note?
To add the note. 'Cause at some point-
Okay, there's no requirement, he's saying. It's not required by any statute to add it. Okay, so the board doesn't want to add it?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect any of these amounts, and the vo, the voters need to know what those amounts are, and it doesn't change it.
Alright. Back to, uh, uh, next article?
The next thing is, where, where the citizens need an understanding of the whole complexity of Evergreen, besides just being a word.
Yeah. Okay, Article six. He says, I'm concerned with the wording about reinstating a cut. The purpose, the appropriation should be stated without reference to the operating budget since it is separate. Also, is it within the ten percent limitations? However, if you say DRAO is okay with this, then I withdraw my comment. And they had already seen, and they didn't have an issue with that. Seven, eight, nine, look good. Uh, Article ten is okay. My comments on the proposed ordinance itself are below, so we'll deal with that later.
Go back to six. I mean, I know this is semantics, but do we want to change word cut to reduction?
You know, I go along that, cut, cut has this-
Reduction.
Yeah, I go like that. Is there something about the word cut?
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So, you want to remove the word cut?
Reduction.
And have it say reduction?
Yes.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
Cut from to reduction of.
Yeah.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
Yes. Yep, motion to, in Article six, the change on the third line, the change the word cut to reduction of. Motion to, in Article six, the change on the third line, the change the word "cut" to "reduction of".
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The unanimous. Okay.
Alright. Okay, so the next one is Article eleven. Looks good, but I would recommend, which means, oh, I would recommend adding these words. As the, as meeting the standards for an eligible district as set forth in RSA seventy-nine E colon two I, after the words "to commercial areas".
It's, so, in the second line?
Yep, second line.
We have the words "to commercial areas".
And it would say, "As meeting the standards for an eligible district as set forth in RSA seventy-nine E two I".
And to designate two commercial areas of town as meeting the eligibility?
As meeting the standards for an eligible district as set forth in RSA seventy-nine E two I.
Versus just "as eligible".
Right. He said, "This is not critical, but the authority for a town to limit the applicability of this statute to a particular area is contained in that section. It seems prudent to mention it."
That's why he gets paid the big bucks.
Some more.
Alright. Seconded. All those in favor of that change, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, Nick made the motion.
And Phil seconded.
Phil seconded. That was unanimous.
Article twelve.
Article twelve.
It's gone.
Is gone, so it's, you know...
I'm just curious what he wanted to say, though. That might, we may get a motion to reconsider that.
It might sway somebody, yeah.
Might sway somebody.
Oh, he says, "Article on the warrant is okay, but the ballot question must read as follows pursuant to thirty-seven fifteen. Do you favor adoption of the town manager plan as provided in chapter thirty-seven of the revised statutes annotated?"
Does that change your opinion?
Town manager plan?
Maybe you need a week to think about it.
If the chair would remember that, Nick.
Then we need a committee.
Takes a year to launch a vote. How long's it gonna take to do this?
Can you state that again? What does it have to read?
Do you favor adoption of the town manager plan as provided in chapter thirty-seven?
That's our town manager plan.
Must say in chapter thirty-seven.
It, it answers
Thank you.
Brings out my point.
The town manager plan?
Good one, Phil.
There's gonna be a lot of plans from here on.
I sense a filibuster.
Yes, Article thirteen.
There'll be a lot of plans.
Oh, that was it on that one. Yeah, Article thirteen.
It's gonna be a long time before that rail trail's...
The word principal should be principal, L-E versus A-L. This is in the petition article. Also, while the language appears to track the statute, the article proposes up to the minimum single-family residential lot size specified in the local ordinance, while the statute states the greater of two acres or the minimum single-family residential lot size specified in the local ordinance. Since this is a petition article, you can't change the wording, but you may want to amend it at the deliberative session to make those corrections.
So, does that move our, um, our consecutive years?
Right, 'cause we're not, we're not putting in the consecutive either, because it's a petition article, right?
No.
We don't know what the intent of the, of the petition was.
Right, so we're not, we're not adding consecutive. We didn't change it.
We did not change that.
Right.
No, right.
We didn't, we didn't motion to add consecutive. So it won't appear. Article fourteen says looks okay. Article fifteen appears problematic.
Just leave it at that.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No, I, we know he's gonna say, well, how loud is noise? Where is five hundred feet? What's a nuisance? I mean, is it a chainsaw? Or is it a, you know, if the neighbor has a chainsaw, is that a nuisance? We don't know.
Us Kerry, I think, also told us that it was, there were parts that were...
He just basically says it could lead to enforcement issues and legal challenges.
Okay. Anything else?
Just sign.
All business? Alvin Drive, did we ever find out this stuff?
Oh, yeah. No, we're not picking up rubbish, and we are not snow plowing it. Um, recycling is taking place like it does in all private rooms.
Well, I, I, I do have one question. When that came before us, our concern was that asphalt had been built up around all of the drains. And that's why we didn't want to okay it, because the drains were now no longer functioning the way they should. The asphalt is still there. So, we're gonna, at some point, be coming into the spring thaw, and I know the two drains at the very end are total, they don't function.
They're not working.
So we have all the water coming from that street onto Terrell Hill. So is that something we would like our Public Works to address?
Well, they don't, they won't function, oh, 'cause the, the, uh...
Even without the tire, it's still gonna be too high.
Even with the tire, that's too high.
The tire's too high, but the question, but the question you're saying is that, let's say if, if we had a lot of runoff, and it caused erosion down some of the other roads, who would be responsible for it?
They would.
Right, and I think, when, when we had that discussion, we said we didn't want to okay the plan with the structures staying high with the asphalt. We wanted those structures lowered.
Lowered and then raised.
So they operated properly. Well, nothing has been done, and they're still in a raised position, and that's gonna be problematic as we go forward.
Prefer to stay out of it.
Sorry?
I, I, I prefer the town to stay out of putting modifications in place right now. I mean, that's where you were leading. What, what can DPW do?
No, 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 no.
I don't want them to do anything.
No, I think I think what I'm looking for is, um...
Notice?
Notice to the developer that these structures were raised. The reason we didn't provide any town services was because that was not a, an acceptable change, and something needs to be corrected, particularly before the spring runoff.
So you just wanna put on notice? Maybe, maybe, put a notice up for...
Anything else? Anything? Going once?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? You wanna filibuster, Steve?
No, not today.
You sure?
We could study this for a while.
We could study it, the adjournment. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.